So the first item is the consent agenda. Everybody had a chance to review the consent agenda?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve.
Hey, do we want to...
I'll second that.
Do we want to have any further discussion on that? All those for? All those against? Alright. And the warrant is actually moving its way down the table. I did ask, because this is the third meeting in a row where all I've seen is that warrant. There's been no business stuff. It's all been the payroll. So I asked Adam to look into that and he's gonna take that back and figure out what's happening.
Moving into finance, I have a question too.
So the last, I don't know if it's two or three, do you want me to just bring them to the next meeting or do you want to come in and sign them as soon as possible?
What I'm talking about, the warrants?
More.
The warrants. So the way we have been doing it is it's been part of the consent agenda, so it's been getting the full committee's approval.
Yeah, okay.
And then select a number, sign it until the whole thing is up. Unless there's something on there that's in dire need of going out for payment, then...
So here's the thing, they've gone out for payment, so yeah.
At this point, it's just a formality?
At this point, it's just a formality, correct.
Okay. The visitor comments. You didn't want to say anything about it? Okay, Mr. Sargent?
Alright, I'm gonna try to squeeze this all into three minutes as best I can. I'm Mr. Sargent, I'm the band director here at Grandview College School. I just want to give some comments about things that have been happening in our future events. All students in instrumental programs at East Meadow School of Grandview High School have been having photo, uh, the March. Photos were taken from Brian Marks specifically at Grandview and also East Meadow parent. Photo packages will be announced in the near future and portion of the proceeds will be donated back into the Grandview Music Parents Association. And speaking of Grandview Music Parents Association, March 28th is the 12th Annual Men Who Cook Benefit Dinner and Raffle that supports the FPA to keep the performing arts alive here in Grandview. There were some raffle donations including Pioneer Valley, Inglewood Harding, Historic Theater Field, Lincoln Quarian, and many of our local outstanding businesses and supportive families. On April 4th, Grandview Junior Senior High School Band will be performing at the Massachusetts Instrumental and Conductors Concordial Association Music Performance Assessment at Delta Town High School. It's an evaluation or ensemble rating based on their performance and it shows indicators of growth through the students and what can be accountable as an educator. If E achieves a gold rating, we get the opportunity to perform at either Mechanics Hall in Worcester or Boston Symphony Hall in the Old Metal Showcase. May 20th, East Meadow Band, Chord and Grandview Junior Senior High School Band will be performing their annual spring concert in the gymnasium at East Meadow here at 600 PM. You will also be in the Memorial Day Parade on May 25th. And finally, and there's some small print I have to say, sorry. On June 5th and 6th at the East Meadow Gymnasium in conjunction with theatrical rights worldwide, Grandview Junior Senior High School Drama Club will be producing an Adams Family Musical using lyrics by Anthony Liffa and book by Marshall Brickman and Greg Lees. Rehearsals are going extremely well. We are looking forward today to doing this hilariously funny, gut-wrenching and ironically hard-forming musical, Little Once They Adams Falls in Love, but Kenshin Convince Her Coopie Family and Their Ancestors to be one, to be normal for one single night. Who's to say? I'm done.
Thank you. Would anybody mind if I asked him just one thing?
What's going on there?
Last year during the little concert that you had, you had another adult band joining high school band to help them understand what it felt like playing a larger band since we only have so many members. Are you going to be doing the same thing this year or is that...
Not this year, in the future.
Okay, 'cause I just thought that was absolutely phenomenal, the way that worked out last year.
I do too.
Okay.
But in the future, we will continue to have that again.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
That's good, that's a good question.
Visitor comments, the next one is, it's Kim.
Hi, Kim Goldsmith, Kaylee Street, Grandview, Mass. I don't have much prepared, I thought we were gonna chat before the meeting, but...
Oh, I was here, I'm sorry, you could've, you just could...
Yeah, well, I didn't know how it works, 'cause like everybody was here, so then I didn't know if it made a forum or... Anyhow, I'm just gonna go off the tip of my brain. One question that I have was, I wasn't sure if we usually vote on school choice this early before the next school year, 'cause I was told that you just need to tell DESI by June 1st. So that was just one of my questions in general. Another question that I had was, we went to the town meeting last week and they said there were numerous issues with like the lecture company signing off on the school and the town signing back the building off, so I wasn't sure if that was addressed or is gonna be addressed or how that works. I know the town didn't sign off on it because there were still issues. So I don't know anything about that. The other thing was I just wanted to speak about school choice in general. Obviously, I don't know where the folks are gonna go because we're talking beforehand, but just to reiterate things that we've said in the past, you know, nobody is opposed to school choice, but we're opposed to it if it directly affects the kids in Grandview. We know that people want to come to this school because it's brand new and nice, but it was built on our taxpayer dollars for the children of this town first and foremost. My concern is that if we haven't fixed the so-called capacity issue that we've been talking about for the last six or seven months, we don't know how anyone can open this up to vote for school choice for any grade in East Meadow for the next year. And I just feel that the school choice decision should be tabled until this capacity issue that everybody has been talking about is resolved.
Marcus.
The winter sports banquet is tonight. Lacrosse, baseball, and softball started their tryouts and had their, the spring sports meeting, it was yesterday. MCAS starts this month. Progress supports were sent out last week. Student government position elections are coming up this month. We had a health fair put on in part by Nancy Jenks, as well as she brought in the program Stop the Bleed and had an anxiety and depression seminar that students could volunteer to go to. Isaiah is a student at GHS and was interviewed by the Gazette for his upcoming year old in GHS, which will be, which will be out in the paper on Thursday. Girls soccer went, attended the 31st Annual Grammy-er, Lus-Satno Meeting. Julia Frappier and Julia Galvin, Nora Young and Emily Valley were the ones who attended. Nora was awarded Player of the Year for Division Four Soccer. Kaylee, Nora, Louis Gaye are participating in the Hall of Fame All-Star Game this week. Intermural basketball and soccer is starting up again for the next eight weeks. MIAA voted to move into a statewide championship over districted. Student Advisory Council has started working on core values survey that will be sent out to students, that'll be connected into our advisories that we have each month. And as you heard from Mr. Sargent, there will be a Men Who Cook this month.
What was it that you mentioned about MIAA?
So, they're getting rid of like the Western Mass and they're making it just statewide.
Okay. Thank you.
You brought backup, I was wondering if...
That's my sister, she just wanted to walk over here and hear me talk.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering what that meant, if there was more, if there was more going on.
Alright, I'm also gonna excuse myself right away.
Okay, have a good night and thanks for coming.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you.
For the record, he's doing a great job. And everything is recorded, if you don't watch it over and over again, you can do that too.
I think you can buy the DVDs from G-Cam. The next item on the agenda is Chartwell's. I don't know if they're gonna come up to the table or Adam's coming back?
Yeah.
I don't know who, how this is going...
Yes, please.
Thank you for having us.
I guess you can just grab, grab the seat that Marcus had and this one here.
Pass some stuff, huh? Unless Adam sent this to you.
I did, yeah, this is a...
This is Mike Edgar, this is Chris Callahan, he's the district manager here.
Yeah, Mike actually retired, so I'm the new support for Ken here in Grandview. And the nice thing is my, most of my districts I cover are in Massachusetts, so I know Mike covered a lot of Connecticut, so we have a lot of support in Massachusetts accounts and my office is out of Leominster, Mass, so it's not too far away, it's about an hour. It's a beautiful drive, 202, so enjoy it.
Unless it's snowing.
Right, exactly.
So the report that we sent, it's, we're mid-year right now, so we're doing January this year from January last year. So we got month-to-date totals and we got year-to-date comparisons. If you notice on the month-to-day comparisons, our total meal counts from this January to last January, we are 1,500 more meals served this past January than last January. Our total revenue is up about 5,000. Our product costs, this year we've really managed our product costs really well, we're down, considering we've served 1,500 more meals in January, our costs were down about Personnel costs were down, total, we had a couple two-hour delays, we had some delays, so our labor cost was down a little bit in January compared to last year. So our net profit this past January compared to last January, we were about $8,300 better. We made a profit of $4,700 compared to last year, we lost $3,500. So we had a very good January. Now, year-to-date, this January to last January, we're up 4,000 more meals so far as compared to last January. Enrollment's been up a little bit, you know, we got like 25 to 30 more students enrolled this year. We got more free and reduced students on the books compared to last year, so that's helped our reimbursement rates, which are up $12,000 compared to last year. Our daily sales average compared to last year, we're about $200 a day up from our past year. Product costs, even though we've served 4,000 more meals, our product costs are down $6,500 year-to-date. Like I said, I think it's been a lot better managed as far as our product costs, we've been using a lot more commodity products, which we get from the USDA. So you know, the team has really done a really good job as far as handling product costs. Rebates, we usually get rebates on our food, from being Chartwell's, we get rebates on certain products. They're a little bit down this year, that's because we're purchasing less food and we're using more commodity products. So year-to-date, we're almost $9,000 in the black this year, compared to last year, we were a little bit behind $5,000, so we have like a 13, 5 difference compared to last year. So it's a good story to tell.
Yeah, looks like February's actually just about complete too, and looks like a...
It was a break-even.
Break-even.
Break-even month, considering...
Which is great for a short month, for February.
I don't know if I can jump in here and just ask a question. I know in the past, like, so the meal counts up, and do we know if that meal counts up because of there's been less snow days this year or because we're selling more meals per day? Because that's a big question in my...
We're selling more meals, because if you look at our month-to-day comparison, we had the same amount of service days in January, 21-21. We're actually down three days this year and we've served 4,000 more meals than the past year.
Okay, 'cause that was the piece that you were going to try to figure out, how we can sell more meals per day, you were gonna reach out to the students and see what it is that they, they would be interested in buying, so I just wanted to make sure that that was still on track.
Yeah, like I said, enrollment's been up a little bit, that's certainly helped. A la carte sales have been up, just, I think a variety of menu, difference in the menu has really helped.
You've done the student choice at the high school?
We haven't done the student choice.
This year, okay.
And then one other question.
Sure.
The half-day lunches, how is that working out on your side? Are you selling enough there to make it worthwhile or...
Absolutely, East Meadow, we're up, we do about 40 meals a day and half-days or before, we weren't serving lunches at all, so to me, that's a huge plus.
I just, I wouldn't necessarily want to talk about taking that away because there might be some people that are now starting to rely on that, but I just want to make sure it was working.
Absolutely, I mean, we usually have four staff, like in East Meadow, one staff does it for that day, so it's definitely a plus. I mean, there's definitely kids that I think rely on that meal that day, which has been a big benefit, I believe.
Okay. Does anybody else have any?
So probably this is for both of you to clarify something that we talked about a few weeks ago, maybe over a month ago, whatever it was. So let me say that we are about $9,000 in the black. What does that mean? And I'm asking it, you know, this should be, should be upfront. We have our conversations here and we see these numbers, and you know, we are happy to see that they're in the black, and then we hear from the town that there is actually a negative account. So there is something that either we are missing somewhere or in the conversation that is happening with the town, there is something that is being missed, I just want to understand whether or not we know what that is.
The primary probably, it's basically constant in every district we manage, but it has to do with product cost, okay? So what happens is, our numbers are based on uses, what we use in product costs for food costs. What your books say are using just what we purchased. So we have an asset on hand throughout the year that we count as an asset because it's food on hand. So you may not be counting that as an asset, we do. So until it's used, and at the end of the year, the goal is to take that inventory, usually it's high at the beginning of the year because you're building up your inventory, and as the year goes through, at the end of the year, it's really low because your inventory on hand is worked down really low at the end of the year. So the difference is, again, we count inventory on hand as an asset and you don't.
So would it really be a flow of cash?
Basically.
Okay.
So by the end of the year, we should get close to...
Exactly.
A real number?
Exactly.
We do take that inventory though into account. So Kristen does send inventory reports to the town on a monthly basis. So that, now it's a projection when it's put into cash value in Steve's projection, but we do take that inventory into account.
So my question, do we have a beginning balance that we start off with?
Yes.
So it carries over?
Correct.
Would that be included in this number or that's included in the...
It's included our number, the inventory on hand's included our number. So you'll basically see, again, as we actually build the year, it's, the inventory's a little higher during the primary months of the year. As we run down, April, May, June, we run that down, so we try to run it down to barely nothing. We'll have a lot of commodities on hand, which really isn't a big value to in terms of your bill, but it's just the purchase inventory on hand is the difference. It's a big variance, probably.
So it would be, because you start up with needing so much, a lot of money goes out in the beginning and then at a certain point in the year, the outflow slows down and the inflow stays the same.
Correct, correct.
So I'm just thinking on the other side. So from last year, if we have a negative, does that negative get carried over into this year to come up with the final number?
Yes, you're, basically your ending balance at June becomes your beginning balance in September.
Okay.
Okay, so basically it'll be low, and then whatever we, actually the beginning max is September, and then we purchase food to fill the storerooms, it's a little higher than September, exactly. Yep, yep.
Why would that be the case if we're closing the books on the need to balance?
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, 'cause we're not.
I think we switched topics halfway through.
We're not. So to answer your questions on, are books actual cash or money in that account? We should be at zero every year. There's a transfer that's made at the end of the year for unpaid lunch debts, people prepay their meals, so are, at the end of it, our cash when we start in July 1 should be zero?
Right, right. It's just basically accounting practice, how most businesses operate with inventory product costs.
I think, at least for me, I've gone through so many iterations of this to understand what it is, and when we think that we understood finally, you know, we hear the good news from you, then we hear from the town that there is a deficit. So are we now saying that when we get to the end of the year, the school year, we should not have a deficit that the town will claim?
So that's not, that's not a definite answer. There might be a deficit, there might be unpaid lunch debts that we have to transfer local money to cover that. So that account could be in the negative.
Okay.
There's multiple factors that would go into the actual cash balance of that account.
Correct.
So it's more than just the Chartwell's money?
Yes.
Yeah.
So then, to be honest with you, from this perspective, historically at this point in the year, we're still looking at a deficit on the whole thing simply because we haven't met that break-even point, and to look like we've made that break-even point now actually, I think makes us look pretty good. But now that I've said that, something gonna go wrong in a walk-in or something?
Well, that's the challenge, are you gonna have three more snow days or, you know, so many things that you have to take into account when they happen, so, and it's, again, looks like you're trending in the right direction, which is great. I mean, in terms of last year, it's a huge improvement, in terms of increased sales, increased, decreased expenses, and then as our, again, there's gonna be a variance always until we reconcile at the end of the year, but there's always gonna be a difference based on our contract. And most are the same, so it's, most contracts are the same as well. So most companies do their accounting systems.
So do we know the beginning balance for this year?
For the revolving count or for inventory?
So again, we're talking two different things, so what, what...
Beginning balance.
When we started the year, what was our balance?
Like on our books?
I don't know.
I'm not sure, but I can get that for you, yeah.
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 And that's the revolving count of balance?
Yeah, yeah, so, just want to make sure we're clear on what account, our account, our cash balance, yeah, I can get that for you.
All in the school, one revolving?
It's all in the school, one revolving.
One account.
One account.
Yep, yep, which is heavily regulated, what you can use there too. And anytime you, if there's a subcommittee or you want to kind of review it more in detail, I'd be happy to help.
What was the balance in your, in your books?
Well, it's a difference. We're looking at our balance for last year, what was the end-of-year balance? It was a loss, it was a program loss.
I'm sorry, it was like 27.
$20,000 loss?
No, like 2,000.
$2,000 loss at the end of last year. And we're, and we're at $9,000 this year profit, so already, this point, this time. So at the end of the year, our book showed a $3,000 loss, so...
But what did we factor at the beginning of the year for the budget? Was it a loss of some, because I thought we go into this with a loss number, right?
Yeah, we have a contingency built in.
Yep, we do.
And then the loss that we had last year, I think, was lower than...
Oh, yeah.
What we had built into the budget, right?
So we don't, we don't necessarily, we don't technically go with a loss. We have a contingency...
Correct.
That may cover a loss, but the balance has to really...
The balance always has to start at zero, whatever that negative balance is as of June 30th. It's dependent on the local fund to get that balance to zero to start the new year.
Correct.
Hmm?
Yep, confusing, I know, but hopefully clarify a little bit, but...
I think I got half of it.
Okay, alright. But again, we're gonna sit down in another meeting too, I'd be happy to help too.
Are we still getting these updates with the same frequency as last year?
These updates?
Chartwell's update to you?
Yeah, yeah.
Every month, and actually, when I came on, I introduced this to Adam and Ken last week, this is what I do with my other clients too, is just kind of summarize the large P&amp;L in the format with explanations on why we're up or down. So it helps you, so this will be a monthly basis here on this, so it's a pretty simple format.
We've not been looking at it.
We haven't been getting it as a committee this year as frequently as we did last year, but Adam has been giving us really high-level guest updates.
Yeah, yeah. So what this, what this does, it's got a few different purposes. It kind of condenses the P&amp;L, which is really difficult to understand, and combines Ken's highlights for the month, kind of all in this...
Correct.
Easy-to-view summary.
And the second page of it actually outlines its patient, so, which helps too.
So Jen, you look like you wanted to ask something, or you...
No, I'm good.
Jamie, you also?
Well, just to echo what Emery said, because we keep hearing about this school lunch deficit at the end of the year, floating around Conne Hall and so on, so I just said, we're clear on that, there isn't one. There will not be one.
Okay. By law, you can't have one, okay? You need to start the new year. That doesn't mean we didn't use the contingency to offset the negative balance that may have been in that account.
But like, how much was it last year? Just to compare, what was it last?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, but I will get that when I get Emery, all that information, yep.
But it doesn't look like, if you stay on this track, which you seem to be, that shouldn't be, that word shouldn't be used around anywhere.
But again, this is only part of what makes up that cash balance on the town side.
And as we grow this amount, it starts to cover a lot of those expenses, so, yep.
So if we have, let's say, last year you said we ended with $2,000 in the radar, but you build your inventory at the beginning of the year, correct? So that adds on top of that $2,000?
Well, whatever the, no, actually that's incorporated into our numbers, so our inventory on hand is in there already, yeah.
Alright. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you, everybody.
Student Opportunity Act Plan discussion.
Yep. Alright, so I just wanted to give the school committee an update on our work with the Student Opportunity Act. The legislation requires that we identify resources that support closing the achievement gap of student subgroups. It requires that the school department submit an implementation plan, we actually have to develop and submit it. Just so you know, Grandview received $21,330 in minimum aid. We were not a district that benefited from foundation aid, so we have a very small amount that we're working with. But our plan will include the work that we've been doing since the beginning of the year in identifying students at risk and the interventions that we're providing. The legislation requires that we have parental voice and community voice in the plan, so we are meeting with school councils on March 18th. We will have a draft plan ready for them to review, just to stimulate some discussion and conversation so they understand the work that has been going on, and they can provide feedback and any ideas to shape the plan, and then we bring the plan back to you March 24th for a vote. And it needs to be submitted by April 1st.
I'm sure the gap is identified by MCAS scores?
Primarily MCAS scores, although our MCAS scores don't necessarily identify student subgroups as the issue. Typically, our subgroups perform very strongly on MCAS, so we can use other data like MAP data as a secondary reference for creating the groups of students that we would target to provide interventions for.
And the gap is based on this year's? Well, it couldn't be, right?
Well, last year's scores, but where they are this year in their schooling, yeah.
So wouldn't our normal MAP testing that we've been rolling out and implementing start to capture a lot of this data information?
Yeah, right, so we're looking at three things. We're looking at MAP data, we're looking at MCAS data, and we're looking at classroom assessments, grades, to see how all three give us a picture, a complete picture of a student, and whether or not there are skill sets that are missing via MAP, which identifies specific skills, whether there's broader standards that we may not be teaching in the curriculum. MCAS gives us that information. And then really, the classroom assessments and classroom grades really lead us down a discussion around are our class instructional minutes being used with rigor? Are we asking rigorous questions? Are we implementing effective lessons that raise the bar for students to meet the new demands of standardized testing?
I just feel like we've been, your team has been doing a lot of work over the last couple of years, just kind of laying foundational blocks?
Yes, yep.
To get to a point where I think we're gonna be close to in the next 12 to 18 months, is that not correct?
True. We've already started with the second round of MCAS, pulling grade-level teams of teachers together, identifying students that did not show growth, brainstorming skills and standards that need to be either retaught or taught, again, regrouping students, so all of that work is happening now, which was the foundation of MAP that we laid last year. We couldn't do that work until we had really on-time assessments.
So given that state always takes about a decade to wrap up things, how long do you think it's gonna be until they decide whether or not we're meeting the standard?
So, we are a short-form district with $21,330, unlike Chicopee, which was 2 million?
Yeah.
About 2 million. Springfield, which was probably 11 million. We're not gonna be higher on the radar. So they'll give the plan a review, there's a template that we follow, they want to make sure that we're hitting the criteria. I don't suppose that anything that we're doing is outside what they would expect in terms of providing interventions and support for at-risk students, whether it's... Whether it's for MCAS and growth, or our tenth and eleventh graders preparing for graduation and college and career. So I don't think, you know, we're, we're gonna put anything in the plan that would red flag. You know, we're, we pretty much are choosing interventions that are approved by the state already.
So you're completing the outline that you sent us, right?
Yes. Yep. So that's the, yep, yep, yep.
And you're doing that with the school councils?
So actually, tomorrow we do it, the leadership team, to create the draft. And then, let me back up the train a little bit. All of this work started before DESI required the plan. This is the work that happens over the summer. Once the preliminary MCAS data is released, staff, the teachers, sorry, the principals and guidance get together to identify students that may need tutoring or extra support in their schedule. So the work has already been done. It's more really kind of documenting what we're doing and then sharing with the community to make sure that we're not missing anything from the parent's perspective.
And this is a two-year plan according to this?
Mm-hmm.
And then you get twenty-one thousand a year for the next couple of years?
Well.
Yeah.
It's not guaranteed.
No.
Right. It's.
It's not guaranteed.
One of those non-guaranteed.
Yes.
Do this and that, and maybe we'll give you money.
Yep.
Yes. Yep.
Lot of work.
Yeah.
Lot of work.
So on a separate note, same topic. The rural district. Do we know where, where that stands? I know there was talk about how we should try to make sure that we, as a town, get grouped into that.
Yep.
Is there, is there anything that you're gonna need the school committee to do?
At this point, no. I'm on the board of directors for the rural schools. Right now, because we're going into legislative session, we're making the connections with legislators. Once we find out what's being proposed and really take a temperature of whether or not rural schools is still a high priority, that will make a difference as to what we advocate for. So whether it's, it's extending rural schools to include tier three, which we are, we're not a tier one or a tier two. Whether it's to include small and rural schools in the discussion. But first and foremost, we have to take the temperature of the legislature. And then we come back to school committees and say, okay, this is what we need to advocate for. This is gonna have some traction with legislators and with school committees that get behind it can really push legislators to include the funding that needs to be associated with rural schools, the two million. You know, if we can increase it to four million, then we get all of the schools that would be considered rural funded.
I just know that the last I heard when we had that woman come out and speak about it, she mentioned how the definition was still loosey.
Yes.
And we were hoping to kind of fit ourselves within that definition because it was going to most likely be an add for us in there.
Right. We don't fit the federal, but the state doesn't necessarily require the rural schools coalition to define rural by the federal standard. So Massachusetts is unique. We're not as geographically large as a Montana, which is really the federal, you know. That's what they're looking at as rural. So the legislature's been very open to a Massachusetts definition. And that is one of the goals of the coalition, is to research that and define it for Massachusetts. To be inclusive of as many districts like Granby that have high acreage, low resident population. But also, the unique piece in Massachusetts is declining enrollment. So to capture districts that have declining enrollment.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Yep, no, that's fine. Happy to talk about it.
All right. The next item is the school choice vote.
So you have in your folder the request this year for school choice. It happens now because it has a budgetary impact as we budget for FY twenty-one.
So on this sheet, I just wanna make sure that we're reading this correctly. The grades that are listed there, is that the grades they're in now, or is that the grades they're gonna be next year?
Next year.
Next year?
Mm-hmm.
So grade three next year is gonna be, is gonna be listed as grade four. Grade five is what's currently grade four.
Correct.
And grade six is what's currently.
Currently grade five. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So you're, you're guessing kindergarten enrollment's gonna be forty-seven?
Yeah, that's based on census at this point. And we're, we're pre-registering now. Yep. Or registering now. It's in the folder. Scroll down. Scroll up.
And all the proposed openings should be read as proposed school choice?
Yes.
I don't know if anybody wants to ask. Some questions? I'm gonna try to let others go first before.
When, when do we have to vote by?
Well, it has a budgetary impact.
Right.
So that's why it's on the agenda now and typically voted now or at the next meeting.
Because without these, they would have a negative.
Correct. So in Granby, although the recommendation is to not use revolving accounts to fund the general operating budget, in Granby we do, and we have for a very long time, probably since two thousand. And so the position is what you see. We rely on school choice for the general operating budget. As you know, the personnel is the largest line we have. So school choice necessarily ends up supporting instructional classrooms. Not the place you're supposed to be, but unfortunately, it is what it is.
When, when do you, I'm just trying to think past, when do, when do you accept school choice students? Isn't it typical that you might not know that till June anyway? You don't know this. If we voted this tonight.
Mm-hmm.
We advertised, but you, we don't accept school choice until June maybe?
So.
How does that?
Yep. So the application process occurs. We already have phone calls, parents asking. One of the things we, we want to be careful of is if parents are looking at school choice at a particular grade and we are not going to open seats, then we wanna be very clear with parents because they are looking for a choice for their child. So it gives them the opportunity to look in other communities that might have openings. So there's a couple of reasons why we open now. And typically, we have not yet been in a position where we've had to have a lottery. We've, a lottery where we have over enroll, or we have more applicants in a grade level than we have seats open.
So are, are we concerned, I know, I've only been on a year and I know you came in and, and this, we have to squeeze the shoe here, if I call it that. So are we, are we still be concerned about people moving into our community who are, are kids who then will add to our space issues before we do this?
So for what grade level?
Well, anyone. I, I was gonna ask how the, what the thinking was for these twenty-three openings.
Right.
I can see the numbers.
So kindergarten, we, we like to have kindergarten enrollment high because when school choice families join us in kindergarten, they are welcomed at the very beginning of their academic career. And typically, you'll see those families stay with us right through grade twelve. So you'll notice grade one, only three proposed. None in grade two. So grade five, I'm sorry, grade three, five openings. So we do, as I said, we like to get students to enroll early as school choice, so that they're with us the majority of their career. I think the benefit of having the three classrooms per grade level, with a real spike in resident enrollment, we can spread the students out over three classes. So the impact of, say, three students coming in in one grade level is less than if we had two or five students. They get dispersed across three classrooms. So keeping three classrooms has been a goal.
So if we look at what we currently have.
Mm-hmm.
The reason why I'm asking whether we need to, you know, vote tonight is because I don't know if it's gonna come up during our school committee goals, but we typically talk about classroom size and all that. That determines some of the elements here. But from a budget perspective, let's say we just go with twenty-five student maximum. Four through six, I think that's what it was, right, in the past years? If we go with that with two classrooms, that means fifty students. If you wanna keep it at that level and you go with fifty students, that means between what we are seeing here and what we would have with fifty students per grade is seven times fifty, fifty students. Fifty students at five thousand dollars, right? That's your two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For a district like this is a, it's a substantial.
That's the minimum too, because there's, there's more into that cost. So you're looking at closer probably to three hundred thousand dollars.
So it's not as simple as you're looking at the numbers, classroom sizes and all that. There are, as you said, there are budgetary implications. And that's why I'm asking whether or not it's needed tonight for us to be able to have a little more conversation. You know, otherwise, I see, I see why you're proposing some, some of these numbers. And wherever the numbers are already high, I see that you're proposing zero.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not, we're not adding in students. And the biggest one is, is you just mentioned is kindergarten, you know?
Right.
I just, and I, I just have concerns over one, maybe two of these grades. Simply because we didn't really solve for anything with our vote. And I'm, and I'm afraid that we may take a little bit more light off of something that we can actually handle. That's just my concern.
What do you mean?
Well, grade four, what's gonna be grade four next year? Even though it works out to an average class size of eighteen in fourth grade, if that problem is not solved, then for the next year, it's gonna be just as big as the fourth grade that we have this year, right? So that's my concern. If we had solved for the issue prior, I, I would be a lot more open to that number. But that, that one specifically scares me. And then the grade three behind it isn't.
Yeah.
And then again, it depends on how, how long it takes for us to get through that problem.
Yeah. I agree that we did not solve the problem. And I think last, whatever, last time, our vote, it was really to revisit it. It wasn't, you know, the, it wasn't us saying we solved the problem. It was really, with that motion, we just put it behind us and then we're gonna revisit it. So this allows us to put some color around it, but the school committee goals may help us to really shape it as well. So then we can, we can look at this in light of, in light of that. Because there, I mean, there's no way we can really, we can really address our budget needs, address the classroom sizes all at once with what we currently have. We're gonna have to revisit that. And I think that was the intent today. That's why, if, you know, unless it's urgent, you know, let's just take one more round and just, let's do it next time, maybe? What do you think?
Well, I was also looking at the high school, the numbers you have for seven through twelve.
Mm-hmm.
I can understand you're not gonna take any, most people don't come in as a senior, unless they really want to. You couldn't take more there. There's not more that they would.
As a twelfth grader?
No, before the twelfth grade.
Well, I just think realistically, we don't get enrollment in school choice at the high school level. Seven, twelve, we would be lucky to see half of that come in between nine and eleven. It is not, it is not as attractive as, as a ninth grader or a seventh grader.
And how about the twenty-three elementary proposed? What would you think you would get there?
I think we would, I think we would get close to that.
What was the, how many were accepted last year? Last three years?
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't, yeah, yeah.
Bear, bear in mind, some of this may actually be a little bit different now since we didn't solve the problem. It might make some people less likely to wanna choice, knowing that you still have a bottleneck at the time.
Those class sizes still aren't bad regardless. If you didn't take any, you know, class sizes are still decent.
I don't know. I'm looking at grade five at being twenty-eight, twenty-nine. That's well above the twenty-five that we were just talking about.
And that's, that's with fifty-seven students. Then you have classrooms close to or exceeding sixty coming out for, you know, for the same configuration?
Yep.
That's why this, I mean, again, just bendate is bendate, or time is time that we bought, but it's not, it's not a solution.
And I do need to remind the committee that we currently have eleven twelfth grade school choice students that need to basically be replenished. So if you look back in time when I came on board, one of the biggest issues we had was a lack of attention to the revenue generated through school choice. Therefore, school choice was not advertised. There was not a lot of school choice coming into the district. And you saw us on town meeting floor, asking for that additional funding. Because again, the operational budget is dependent upon school choice.
So this is in lieu of us going to the town to say, we need money to fund the schools?
I think it's even a little bit more than that because this, this actually keeps it kind of level, right? But I don't know where we're at with the students who choice out. But if we get behind that number, then that actually becomes an even bigger drag on, on the local budget, right?
Right.
And that is part of my fear here, is I, I saw a slide from when she came out to do the thing that made it look like we were pretty close and there's not a lot of leeway in that number.
And actually, Mr. Petrus, I do have the numbers. Last year, two thousand and nineteen, we had a hundred and six, which generated six hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and nine thousand. We had sending sixty-six students at three hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-two. And I think, you know, it's important to, I've given these numbers to you before. It's the chart with sending and receiving over time. You know, a hundred and six students is what we had in two thousand and five, but we only had nineteen students going out. So, you know, building programming, continuum of services, rigorous curriculum, STEM, all of those things come together to make sure we're attractive and students want to come to our district. But also, students aren't choosing to leave and seek an alternate. So I think we've done a lot of work in that area, and I think the revenue shows it. I think that, you know, parents are pleased with the education, class size, they're staying. And I'd be very concerned to, to, to rattle that. Because we've worked really hard to get to a place where we're, we're fiscally sound. We're not at town meeting floor, parents aren't upset, you know, I'm not on, just back up the train. Twenty-three students not coming in and not replacing eleven students is probably a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I'll be, again, laying off staff, sports, extracurricular, co-curricular, and that whole cycle then starts again.
Sure. I guess one of the things I wanna ask is if we were to, like, a lot of this, I don't have any issues with, with voting for, right? The high school, I can vote right now on that. A couple of the other grades, I can probably vote right now. But there's, there, there's a couple. So what happens if we choose to peel off just a couple of grades and say, we wanna revisit those in the next cycle or two meetings from now and say, but these grades here, we're fine?
I think we can wait till the next time until, you know, if you have more questions and, you know, you, you wanna talk to me or to principals about what it means in classrooms, you know?
Yeah, that'll be good.
I, we still have time. I think next, the twenty-fourth is, is. It's okay.
Maybe you'll get to this anyway. How much, how much school choice money is being used for this year's budget?
I don't have it off the top of my head. I can get that to you. It's, it's about one year's worth. So it's about six hundred and change thousand. But remember, we had some excess in those accounts because they hadn't been used properly in the past.
The school choice account?
School choice, circuit breaker, all those revolving accounts. So.
Yeah, but I'm just talking about, because this, this is money in school choice. So let's just, let's try to talk school choice.
Yeah. I, I am. I'm just trying to let you know, I'm just guiding you as to why we're, we're able to put so many people on school choices. We're trying to make up for prior years of not efficiently and effectively using that, those funds. So I would say for this year, we probably have about between eight and ten. between eight and ten teachers, I would say, on school choice, approximately six hundred thousand dollars. I can get you the exact number, um, but it's, it's about, it's about that number.
And what are you, what are you proposing putting in for next year, I know it's in here, what are you planning for?
It's about this, the same, the same amount.
Can we clarify what you said?
Yeah.
When you say eight to ten teachers on school choice, it's not that those teachers were hired for school.
No, it's just we offset those.
So we are able to pay for those teachers because we have additional funds coming through.
Well, that wasn't the question, but yes, yes, yep.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that labeling is becoming very important, because people tend to.
Otherwise, we, we understand what you're saying.
I understand, yes, yep.
I think it's important also to understand that um, we have a, basically a full-time teacher on Title One um, doing intervention, so, you know, the, the, the operating budget is offset by multiple uh factors that help reduce the burden to the town.
So those grants coming in, what offset? Some of those, they cover?
Yep, yep.
But it is key that ever since we entered school choice as a district a long time ago, it's always, you'd always like to think it's money that's put away to, you know, fix fields or other things.
Computers, technologies, never been used.
That's what it, that's the intent?
That was always the example here, that we talked, they always talk about the landfill revenue and this and that, but I said, school choice is just important, cause that money is being used to fund the school budget, so that taxpayers don't have to cover that. And that's still the continuing case.
Yes.
Because it would be, it'd be hurting without it.
Yep.
But then it makes it more difficult for the schools to get the other necessities that are needed. Because this is covering operations.
Right, you'd like to have, say, we'd like to reuse that to buy new computers each year, kind of thing, you know, so, but it's never been that way.
There's nine teachers for this current school year that are funded out of school choice.
And you also pay custodians out of that too, right? Presently, you have been for a few years.
Thanks for checking that.
I just, I just, I just wanna make sure we get this right, especially since we didn't solve our issue, and I, while I have while I have the I, I know the, the school feels that they can do it, I just wanna make sure that we're sending the right message across you know, of all pieces, I guess is what I'm trying to do here. Should we decide to table this until? Do we, do we need an official motion, a, a vote to table, or can we just say we tabled it?
Nope, there's no motion.
Okay. Superintendent, focus indicators. I hope everybody read my email. As a reminder, just to make sure that we were hopefully gonna take care of this tonight, because it was important to get this done before the election. And if we don't get these focus indicators out, um, it will really limit our ability to, to complete the review.
And when you say focus indicators, those are the selected areas of focus?
Yeah, so when you go into that file, oh, which one is it called?
It's the rubric?
It's the rubric.
Yeah. Um, it was really close to the top too, I think, um, if you're correct, if I'm wrong, it was really page uh page one. And I believe the way I understood this to be, if you look at, say, the first, the first section, um, standard one, instructional leadership, uh, A only has one, but you could pick one out of B, even though there's three listed there. You would, we would pick one out of those three, and the goal, I think, was to have six across all four of these. So one of them, or two of them might have two, one of them might have three, but we wanted one in at least each, each uh section and roughly uh six across all four, four sections. So I don't, I don't know how you wanna approach this, I, I, I can just throw out where I was leaning and just to, to, to start the discussion. In standard one, I was looking at um, both of them under C, assessment indicator. Standard two, I was looking at I think it was B two. Standard three. I was looking at A two. And standard four was D one. The, the, the last one, I was leaving, you know, wide open to what other people, but that, that's just kinda where I, I saw quickly some of the things that I think we've been working on over the last few years.
What did you say two was?
Two. Two was um, I think it was B two, it was one of the Bs. I, 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 I went back and forth on both of those, slightly different, but I think they're kinda talking around along similar things. I don't know if anybody wants to uh
And those items that have multiple subsections, we have to peel them?
Yeah, so like, if you were to look standard one under D, there's four, we would, we would pick one or two. We didn't, we wouldn't necessarily need all four.
Right, but go to standard four, for instance, the way you picked uh continuous continuous learning indicator for staff, but not for uh the administration. And should they all benefit from that?
Yeah, but again, it was just kind of like a, a line in the sand that I said, this is, this is kinda where I was thinking, and we can kinda take it from there and have a have a discussion. I didn't expect to have the only, like, everybody just flock to him. I was expecting actually you to come out with a few.
So, so the first one, you said B, right? Standard one, B?
When I, when I clicked on something, it, it said, whoops.
And then standard two, you also said B?
Well, standard one, it was B. No, it was uh, it was C, both one and two. Um, standard two.
I mean, especially based on the conversation that we had earlier, wouldn't B make more sense for standard one, that includes student engagement? Then again, that's B, right? Student learning measures, I don't know which, where all these things go.
So I'm just trying to make sure that it's really aligned with what you are.
Yeah, so I would, I would, if it were me, I would, I would think about what the strategic plan implementation looked like.
Yeah.
Um, what our district improvement plan and school improvement plans are looking like. Um, and to your point, the work that's been going on, so assessment is a great example. We've been doing a lot with laying the foundation for data-driven instruction, um, assessments, bringing people together to, to understand that, to shape instruction. If it were me, I think I would certainly want a superintendent focused on standard one. So if you were gonna do multiples, I would say instruction is the one you'd wanna uh keep to, uh, two in.
So we don't have to go through each standard, we can pick multiples from one standard instead of picking from each one?
Well, you'll need at least one indicator from each standard.
But a total of six.
But a total of six. I think we could, I think they also said that if we wanted to make a multi-year one, I don't think we're ready to talk about it. I mean, as much as I'd love to have a multi-year one and, and not have to do it.
So here's what, what I'm trying to make sense of. How much, how much sense does it make for us as a school committee to tell you before you even tell us which one of these align with our strategic plan? Which one uh aligns with the work that you're currently doing? What if we just selected, you know, that E looks like a nice letter, just let's say all E, and it doesn't align with anything that you're doing? That's my concern.
So as a superintendent, whether you're a superintendent, a building principal, or a teacher, you're working in all this. Like, I am doing all of this work every day. So I think if the school committee has particular insight into what they want to know more about, that's what you're trying to tell me in evaluation that you'd like to hear about. Um, but I do think it should match your goals, which should match my goals for um, improving the district. I mean, I'd be happy to tell you I don't agree with an indicator, if you pick one.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just looking at this, like, to be honest with you, no matter what we pick across here, it's better than what we've done in the last few years, which is kind of assess her across like almost all of it, right?
Yeah.
From the amount of work that we do, yes, it would be a lot more manageable.
And I guess my question out is, and I'm, I think I know the answer to this, um, but I'm not sure if we're ready to really go any more with this tonight, cause it looks like you have a lot more thinking you wanna do, or?
Actually, I don't wanna do all, that's what I'm saying, I don't wanna do all the thinking. This is, this is supposed to be something that is, that is discussed and agreed to, as opposed to us saying this is our focus. And you're saying that, hey, I'm working on all these, but I thought the idea was that when the school committee says, this is our focus, as you said, if it's really based on our alignment to a strategic plan, then the expectation, I think, gets augmented. It's not, it's no longer Cheryl, obviously you are doing all of it.
Right.
It's no longer Cheryl's doing this, but the focus now gets emphasized on those items that we pick, that's what I'm assuming. And I would like this to be a, a collaborative decision, as opposed to us telling you, you know, Cheryl, these are the areas that we think are the best areas. If, if, you know, you wanna go the other way, that's fine too, then we can.
No, I, I'm just trying to be, I'm just trying to be fair, because the next, the next step is then Cheryl's gonna go out and start to gather the evidence that she thinks fits the indicators that we've asked her to look at, am I right? I mean, that's kinda the next step.
Yeah, I mean, if you asked me which ones are most impactful, in my opinion, um, for standard one, um, for where Granby is right now, I would say one B and one C um, is a tremendous amount of work uh that has been going on now for, into the fourth year, but certainly this year. Uh, with B and C being fu- like, fully implemented with staff, you know, we're not laying foundation anymore. We're actually in um, grade level meetings and team meetings and middle school meetings and, you know, presenting data and, and really designing different types of instruction and intervention.
Best ones there, those are, that's a no-brainer there. Use those, that's.
Management and operations, that one, that one to me is just your daily like what any manager would really be, be doing for their, for their unit.
I mean, if I looked at the strategic plan, um, I would say we've done an awful lot of work on standard two A, particularly with social emotional well-being, not only of staff, but of students. Um, operational systems at central office, um, I think in terms of where Granby is, that's where the work has been.
So it'd be A, two, and three?
Two A for sure. And I know that we have a, an entire goal in the strategic plan for fiscal systems. So that would be E.
So we have one B and C, two A and E. So if we take three A, I'm just throwing it there, three A and four D.
Yep.
I think we would be all set.
But then, the question is, is four D has two, three A has two, do you mind?
That's fine, no, I think that's fine, I think it, it, it creates the best picture of that standard.
I, I'm just trying to be fair to
Yep.
The amount of work we're gonna ask you to do next too, right, so?
Oh, I'm used to it.
So three, four?
Three A, four D, four D.
I was, I was hoping to lighten the workload for, for you and thereby lighten the workload.
I think it will for you too, I mean, instead of going through every standard, every indicator, every sub-indicator, this will be more meaningful.
They're good, I think those are good choices.
Okay, do we, do we need to vote on that, or are we just, are we good with it the way it is?
I don't think we need to vote.
I, I don't recall voting on it in the past, I think we just kind of all agreed. But then again, we just, we just, we just measured you against everything. Right. School committee goals, now I guess it's our turn, right? Now, these would be the goals for this year or for next year? I don't think we officially got any goals for the school committee for this year.
No.
So I think that our goals from last time, the first one related to policy, uh, third one related to budget and budget process, the fourth one related to community relations plan and implementation of it, they still apply. And they align with the strategic plan as well. The second one, which was the development of the handbook, that's done, right? So we can scratch that and keep the other three and work on that. In fact, the third and the fourth align with our subcommittee work as well, right? So I would, I would just keep these at least for one more year and then work on this.
Yeah, cause I think, um, to be honest with you, this last piece, um, establish an online um site with full access. Um, I think, I think we need to, um, I don't know if that would be a goal for this year or a potential goal for next year, but I'm thinking, um, and I know we've talked, I've talked about this where, um, I think we need to make all these documents available in a specific place on the website, and then not only should the documents be available, I think we need to come up with um a definitions list, so that when we say revolving account, it's, it's not taken as surplus. Cause I, I think there's been a lot of, a lot of back and forth with the terms that we use, that we know what we talk about, that when other people hear, they get a different sense of what the word means, and then miscommunication applies. So I think if we came up with our own definitions list and left it in the same place, so that everybody understood when we said this word, this is what we mean, when we say this phrase, this is what we mean. And then on top of that, as part of this, and I don't know if this is a discussion here or for the budget subcommittee, the other thing I've talked about and asked for is an actual done at the end of the year against the budget that we proposed, so that we can go back and leave on the website. This is what, what the budget was that we asked for for this year, here's the main buckets. At the end of the year, this is what we spent, and here's the main buckets, and any variances are like, well, we had to, this came up, so we shifted money from this place to this place to cover that, you know, that, that expense that we didn't figure on, but we had an excess over here, so we didn't need to go back to the town. Does that make sense, Adam? I know
Yeah.
I know what you and I've talked about, and you said it's an easy thing to do, cause you're running reports.
It doesn't come till September.
But I think, I think we need.
So the problem is, so ours, the fiscal year ends June thirtieth, I have sixty days to file my final report. So within those sixty days, you know, we're making transfers, reclasses, we're getting everything in order, so it's not, as of July one, it wouldn't be posted right to the, to the website.
No, but again, if we, if we start and we lay the, you know, we say, alright, so it's gonna be mid-October, it's gonna be final. Year one is gonna be a little bit of confusion, year two, people can go back and say, well, it was the middle of this month last year. And, and then after probably two or three years, it becomes the expectation and it becomes the norm, right? Yeah. But those are, I'm sorry, but those, I don't know if those are school committee goals or, or how to phrase them, but I think though, that's kinda the direction we should be heading in. Right here, fiscal management goals, this was number three, an online site with full access. As we were, as I was reading that, I'm thinking we need to do more in that space.
I was just looking at the memo.
Yet the thought I have is, I don't know if it's a goal or a talking point or something, but I think since the elementary building is taken care of, I think, um, you hear a lot of stuff about Randy Junior Senior High School. I think there should be a, a development of a five-year plan or something to start to piecemeal, make an improvement at the high school.
Well, that's another.
I don't know where you wanna put it, but.
So it's, it's in the strategic plan. The strategic plan has one more year, um, so my thought would be to begin that discussion uh next year. So next year would be bringing the work group together, um, to discuss that five-year plan, ten-year plan. Um, and simultaneously, we need to have the next iteration of the, of the strategic plan, so we need to have the next three-year plan.
And then, and then in that, in those discussions, I, I, I'm gonna say this all along, I'm sorry, cause I just can't keep the term straight in my head, that's just why the cheat sheet would work great for me, but the, the improvement piece, I know every year we submit the, the improvement piece, uh, I know every year we submit what we think is important, and I'm sure you go through it, but I, I also feel like maybe the, the school committee should also take a look at it and make sure that, um, it lines up with what we're thinking too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know everything on that list is important, but that list was made by Judy, right, and it's a number of years old, and maybe we can kinda look at it and say, is this still as important as, as this, or does this move up now in importance because of X, Y, and Z? I'm just kinda throwing that out there to just, um, 'cause to be honest with you, I'm sorry, but I've not seen that, and I know you, you, you look at it, and I trust, and I have faith, but I just, I just think at some point, maybe the school committee can, could and should take a, a look at it and make sure that we, we see it. I don't know how other people feel about that.
Yeah.
I know you
I don't, I mean
And I know you've asked me about it a few times, Jim, um, whatever that, that list is, that we, we go to the town and say, we, we'd like money to fix this and money to fix that.
That, that sounds good.
I don't know if that gets listed as another goal or what, but that would be for next year.
I mean, I'm not sure that we have to make every single one of those a goal, but
Okay.
Yeah, I think, w- w- we talk about this at the school level too, and at the district level, regarding our values. What are, what are organizational values, and then how does that translate into or through the strategic plan and district improvement plan and school improvement plan? And I feel like one of the things that we've been talking a lot about in terms of value, for a lot of different reasons, is class size, um, strong relationships with students, um, and, and that, I don't have a place where the school committee, that's captured. Um, and I, I don't think we have a great place where it's captured from the school department side either. Um, I know that Steven's doing that work, as Marcus talked about, sending out the survey to students to talk about values. Um, but I think it, it is time to revisit that and, and make clearer statements about that. Um, continuum of services, we talk about it all the time. That was a core value that, um, based on, uh, a, a community work group, uh, where were areas that, um, parents and community members felt like students weren't being supported? Um, and it was in continuum of services. So students not having the breadth of special education programming, um, they were either inclusion or basically out of district. Um, and so that has a fiscal impact, um, but it also has a community impact when, you know, the majority of our special education students are, are being sent out of district. So that came out of a, a, a community work group, and that's something that the school committee has talked for, for, since before I came, probably seven or years or more, how can we develop the, the continuum of services that support social emotional learning, special education, um, so that we're supporting our students in Granby? But I, I, that's, I haven't captured that. Like, these are operational goals. I don't think they really truly define the values that the school committee is basing decisions upon, that we've talked about. I just don't know where, where it is in paper form.
Yeah, just, I mean, uh, I agree with you, and that's the reason why I think so long as we stay on top of things that are within the school committee's purview, budget being one, you know, community relations being another, I think we'll be fine. The items that you're suggesting are all good, but I'm wondering if we need to, right now, make it so detailed. We should add some of those
No, I'm sorry, I didn't
Those broader categories.
I didn't intend for this to be added this year. These are just thoughts I'm having, like, as we go through this, I think we need to tighten up some of what we're trying to do.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that would be one of my goals with the next school committee. Over the summer is to have the retreat, and that would be first and foremost, that we establish, um, a working understanding of historically what the school committee has been working toward, um, and then establish those goals and values, you know, right in the beginning, um, so that there's no confusion as to why we make the decisions that we make
Yeah.
moving through the school year, when decisions can be really difficult.
Yep. So just to hold ourselves accountable then, and to remain within those realistic goals. Can we take those three areas that I forgot? One was budget, one was community relations, and the other one was something? Give me one second. What was it?
It was school and budget.
It was the relations.
Um, policy review, which is our review, um,
Just about done.
Budget, and, and the community relations. Can we take those, look at what we already completed based on the previous goal, whatever is remaining and whatever you suggested, let's just add those on this template, and then that becomes our goal. You see where I'm going with that?
I guess, yeah.
And I think it makes it, that makes it a reasonable set of, uh, goals for us.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So, right now, this is titled, um, Granby School Committee Goals, uh, 2018, 2019, so we would shift that title to 2019, 2020. We would remove the goals that have been completed, such as, um, the training orientation for new members, the, um, manual that documents operational procedures, and we would just move forward with, uh, fiscal management and community relations?
Yes. And, and the policies.
And the policies, yeah.
So, just looking forward, um, a new strategic plan, um, when would you typically wanna get started with that? You have one year left on the one we have.
Yep.
I'm thinking it's probably gonna take a number of months to put together a, a committee, 'cause we'd, we'd wanna figure out who should be on that committee, um, you know, representing
Took about six months, but I think, um,
So we did it twice, so I think over the summer.
Yeah, I think we started over the summer.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I would think, you know, by June 30th of 2022, you'd wanna have the next plan
In place.
Written, and in place, for three years.
We did it over the summer, I know, the last two times.
We'll start next summer, or what?
Well, if it ends this year.
Right.
So, no, we would have to start it over this summer, because going into next academic year, that will be the last one on the current strategic plan.
So we wanna start talking about who, who the committee should be
Yep.
Get that set up and formed and let that start, start rolling, so it's ready in time? Okay. Budget. Is this, is this Adam?
Yeah, do you want me to project it? It's all us, I'm just, yeah. It's all, yeah, it's everybody.
Is this where your tone is at? Everything's all set, okay?
Yes, thanks. No, this is in kind, just.
Is that your, your hotel?
Ah, there we go. Okay, yeah. Did her a little wireless thing?
Will cost you.
Will it cost me?
Mm-hmm.
You don't have money for that, so.
Coffee.
Um, okay, so this is just really quick, um, Cheryl, I just wanna review the in-cost, um, breakout from the town and kinda how we had to adjust the budget based on that increase. Huh? Yeah, well, now, I'm just gonna say, it's just, I don't like to stand up here and, you know, weird face, I don't want to talk. Perfect. Now I can face it a little bit, have questions. Okay, so just an in-kind, uh, cost comparison over the last, um, six fiscal years. Um, and you can see between FY20 last year, the current year that we're in, and projected for FY21, there's a, um, pretty sizable increase. Um, and the main two reasons for that are the increase to, um, employee insurance and employee, uh, retirement costs. So, um, it's an increase of about seventy thousand dollars for retirement and about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for insurance over last year. Um, so what that did was make us have to, um, reduce some things in the budget to balance. Um, again, this is just a pie chart to kinda show where are the percentages, uh, of what makes up the in-kind costs. Um, insurance, retirement, that tuition is, um, school choice, charter, um, added district tuition, there's a bunch of costs that are, that are rolled up into that. Uh, this is just a quick comparison as to, uh, last year or current year FY20 compared to FY21. Again, the, the big jumps are in the retirement and insurance costs to the town. Questions? Concerns?
Well, I guess the obvious questions are related to those bars that are higher this year.
Yep, yep.
Did they increase the rates?
So there's some factors that go into it. Mainly, we've brought on, you know, additional staff, which will obviously increase the amount of insurance that we're, we're paying. That's the biggest factor. Um, and of cour- course, you know, cost increases, plan increases, but the ma- the main factor is us adding additional teachers or staff.
Another question?
Yeah?
Are there any contributions from the employees, or is this covered?
No.
Okay.
Question Mike? No, Emery? No? Okay. So this is really the main, um, the main slide is, these are the things that, um, in our first presentation of the budget, we had in there as, um, additions. To Mike's point, I wanna be careful as to the phrase that we use, additions that were, um, above what we had last year in the budget. Um, based on the jump in in-kind costs, we then had to reduce these from our asks for the FY21 budget, and this is just a itemized list of what we removed, um, from the FY21 budget. Our hopes, our hope is to be able to fund these with other, um, means, but we have not discussed that to this point.
Now I have a question.
Sure.
Sorry.
No.
Um, I know you will, but I just have to ask.
Yeah.
It's trust but verify, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Trust but verify.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Um, when you're looking at what, how you fund parts of this list,
Mm-hmm.
um, you will rate or, or put in a list of order the importance of, of each item?
Mm-hmm.
To be honest, I tried to do that. It's, this is obviously not set in stone, but I did try to do that, at least putting the instructional, um, costs that were reduced up there. Um, it's, it's by no means a, a priority list, but I tried to put them in a order that would
Yeah, and I think, you know, just looking at ILT stipends, you know, ILTs were implemented four years ago on a grant, our Title II A grant. Every year since, we've been providing those stipends through Title II A. It would be really nice to use Title II A as professional development, which is its intent, um, because we've done the professional development now, uh, to get ILTs in the buildings and running. Um, so that Title II A, if we could do it to do things like curriculum writing, or literacy, um, math, uh, professional development, that's the hope. Um, but in putting them at the top of the list, they can go back to grants, um, if they have to, but at some point, the, the operating budget should have in it some of these things that are costs to the district, um, that are going to go on from now until, a- as far as I could see. Uh, and the math teacher, you know, we've got, um, math teachers teaching standards and honors at the high school. We never replaced the math teacher that was, uh, position was eliminated, uh, four years ago. Um, we have standard and honors being taught in the same class space, um, and that I think is a compromise, um, but we need to move away from that practice. Um, the network enhancements are in
So don't you really wanna put that back in?
Right.
That math amazing?
Yeah. But so, but we need, we need the abatement. You know, I mean, all of these, none of, none of what we had in the budget was something that we didn't need or couldn't find a really important use for. Um, you know, these are, these are the discussions that happen when the funding is at the level that it is.
I just, I just, and I, I guess the purpose of, when I was asking, um, was just, with just regards to, let's just say you could, you know, like, like eighty thousand out of one forty-nine, which, which are your high-target items that we really need? And I was not implying that we didn't need anything on that list,
Mm-hmm.
but if something had to give, I was kind of hoping, and maybe this is the list in that order, that that, that we would see, kind of where you would try to, what, what you felt was the most important pieces, um, if you didn't get everything that you wanted, or, or
Well, if you go to the next slide.
Probably asking this all badly, but
No, because there are some things that remained, even though we had to reduce. So, out of the total of our additions, there were things that we prioritized as necessary. So, the new system, phone system at Granby Junior Senior High School, um, that's a security issue. Um, the replacement of the, uh, regular general education teacher for the dean position. Um, the special education teacher at Granby Junior Senior High School and the paraprofessionals, um, you know, feminine hygiene products are a, a new law that's passed that we have to, um, consider, uh, and implement, and our contractual obligations. So, the additions, you know, there are still increases that we prioritize, and then the reductions, yes, we'll prioritize, but I mean, we need them all, or they wouldn't have been in the budget.
Oh, no, I get that. I just, just wanna make sure that
So this additions just means it's a change in what we did last year due to some things happening, like some people leaving,
Yep.
and we're just changing how it, how the budget looked last year to how the budget looks this year.
And this is a new, this, this slide has been in the last, um, couple of presentations. I, I wanted to leave it in there, because after we went through this slide, like Cheryl said, we do still have some priorities that we need in the budget, and, um, again, this list, they're all priorities, um, and I tried to put them in a general order where it would list, you know, from top priority down, but, um, we had to make cuts or reduce the budget at this point with something, and, and this is what we agreed upon.
So Adam, I'm gonna go all the way back. So the increases that we're seeing are primarily caused by increased rates or increased participation?
Participation.
Yeah, participation, yeah. Yeah, participation. I mean, rates are gonna, they're gonna go up on a yearly basis, but the, the big jump is because of participation, is that correct?
So, what I'm seeing is that it's about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars jump from last year, correct? So the, um, the savings that you're showing by eliminating some of those items is a hundred and fifty, over less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we still have a balance of a hundred and ten.
So, yeah, so we, we, uh, maybe offset some other things. I wanna say there was an extra teacher in here that we put to school choice, so we used some other offsets before we got down to this, to this final list, but it wasn't necessarily, it wasn't a wash, so we, 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 the increase to our formula, where the, the town contribution was about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, okay? The increase to in-kind is, like you said, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So it's not, it wasn't a one-for-one reduction based on the in-kinds. We did have to do some moving other things around. Once that happened, this Once that happened, this is kind of what filtered out of that.
Yep. And I, I understand what you're saying. The question that we got last time, you know, if these numbers don't add up and, you know, where is the rest? I think, I don't know what's the best way to really show something like that. But we now decided to use school choice money to fund another position type of thing. But it would be helpful when you add these numbers if at least, you know, roughly, they add up to the increase. Because everyone's mind is gonna go to, okay, the increase is this much and the reduction is that much, what happened to the rest? If there was a simple note somewhere, maybe, not necessarily on this.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so, so, okay, so we do have that information, but for this, this is really just a high-level view of, the main point of this was to show, because of the increase of in-kinds, we did have to reduce some asks from the budget, but we most certainly have those details that, you know, went into these decisions. Yep.
Cause even the scenario that you're talking about tells me, and if I'm wrong, tell me, that, that, that's already putting an additional strain on the budget because whatever we had designs to use the school choice money for now has to be used to...
And it was a combination of school choice, there were some tuitions that we added to Circuit Breaker that are, yes, putting us to the, to the limit at this point.
Well, and I would say, when we built the budget, we anticipated using net school spending increase to begin to build back things that had been taken out of the budget four years ago. So when we see net school spending increased by two hundred and eighty thousand, we build that into our budget. So when, when in-kind basically wipes that off, now we have to go back and reconfigure really basically a zero percent.
I mean, we knew that the in-kind would increase based on insurance, but I don't, we didn't project it to be that high.
Right.
And you, you checked all those, you agree with all those?
Yeah.
I always ask that question because that's the opportunity to ask.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty basic formula that, that Chris, I mean, lays out for us.
It's actually in your...
Yeah, it's in the folder. Yeah, it's in the folder. So, yeah.
So we know, we know the cost. A percentage of it is, gets allocated to the schools and that adds up.
So again, this is just more of a high-level view as to there was a significant increase to in-kind, which then obviously we had to...
So we have, almost the calendar, you know, changes. We have our public hearing on the first of April. So by that date, do we anticipate that courses to fund these items will be better known? So we can present the budget that way, or is that gonna be...
So again, and I'll go back to the school choice decision. What that decision, the vote on how many students we accept is gonna obviously affect this as well. Because though that revenue goes down, then I'm, you know, there's something else that we can't fund with, in this case, school choice. So, yeah, April first, I would love to have it if we can make a decision by the second meeting of this month for school choice. But that, that decision's gonna, that decision will play a role on what our budget looks like for the April first public hearing.
I mean, some of these items I can take a look at and say, you know what, we'll just postpone.
Yeah, and again, so, so be perfectly honest, that new baseball and softball fence, right? Like, like, can I explain this? Like, yeah, we could, we could postpone that. And our goal for this was to, one, enhance the appearance, the look of our fields outback because we have other organizations from the outside coming in and using them. And also, this is a, a revenue generator, as we can, you know, ask surrounding businesses for donations, anything like that. So, yeah, that, that one in particular, people will probably look at and say, we don't need. But there was some thought as to what that twelve thousand dollars would generate in revenue for the school department.
Right. And, and that's exactly how I was looking at it, that, you know, you look at the fence, you look at the ATV, you look at, I don't know, network enhancement, if, you know, you want to push it one more year or work for some other way. Those are really line items that add up.
Yep.
But some other items there have ramifications.
Yeah, certainly.
So, for instance, I don't know the answer, but ILT stipends. What happens if we don't have the ILT, ILT?
Then all of the work in teacher empowered leadership and changing instruction in classrooms is no longer viable.
Right, but that's, to me, that's not just a simple number issue. It's really, it's gonna have additional impact. So we, you know, we should probably have that conversation sooner than later to decide what we want to do with that.
So back to the, your additional request here.
Yep.
So if we go with everything that it is now, we only, all we're getting is, we don't have this year, a special education teacher at the high school, five paraprofessionals, phone system and the contract. Cause the dean we already have.
Yes.
So it's just a switch of the money.
Yep.
Are we gonna, just a question, are we gonna talk about that? We put it in as a one-year, are we gonna have a...
The dean you're talking about?
A discussion about, how's that? Before we just, I'm not saying it isn't working, but before we push it forward, to have a discussion about it?
So again, just to be clear, that this is not the dean position?
I know.
Yeah, this is...
That's a, that's a wash. It's nothing new. So all I'm saying is that we're getting, presently, we're getting one new teacher, special ed high school, and five paraprofessionals in this budget, presently.
As of tonight, correct?
How about, how about books and, are we getting new textbooks anywhere?
So that stuff's already, that's, that's built in, so that's, so...
I mean, just in general, so we can say what is different?
Yes, it's built in, yes, yes. Now, we might increase the cost of that, you know, one year to the other, but that's not a new ask, so that's already in the budget is to...
You gotta put more money in for it.
Which we have. The, the, so again, it's, it's additions that we did not have if you're looking at the prior year budget. Something totally new, if you're looking at this year's budget compared to what we'd like in next year's budget. Right now, we currently have enhancing curriculum materials, supplies. We have that in the budget. We might increase the amount that we're gonna purchase, but that actual line item is already in the budget. You wouldn't be able to go back to this current year's budget and find these line items in there.
But, but I'm also thinking, of course, no, but if, if administration wanted to really look at it, and I guess I'm a stickler for the loss of that math teacher, if you haven't had that. So isn't that a real important thing? Why, why are you putting kids in standard honors classes together? Well, we're not enriching them, we're not, when the MCAS scores are already not good there, that's not helping the situation. So why wouldn't we want to get that teacher over there for math at the expense of something else? And again, that's, I know that's a, that's a big-picture decision, but that's sort of where I would come from, because that's what we're all about here. You know, instructing kids in proving areas that are weak. Am I not correct that our MCAS scores are not good in math? I mean, we're not, we're not...
Well, at the high school, it isn't an issue at the high school. MCAS math, we have high achievement and high rates of passing. Where we have concern is seven and eight. And really, that's addressed with the professional development and curriculum materials that, again, were in the budget. Five, seven, uh, seven, eight math, middle school texts that we used a, a line that was in the budget the year prior.
All right. Thank you for that, just...
Mm-hmm, no, I get it. Yep, I get it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Cause that's the essence of the school system, where the people were more the case. Anybody else? I've, I've got nothing more to say, so... All right.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Public hearing?
So again, yeah, so on our, on our budget calendar that we came up with, we do have April first as the first public hearing. That's something that myself and the subcommittee came up with. Obviously, we can change that.
So it's not a good day, April Fool's Day.
So date of public hearing says four, seven or four, eight?
That's a change, yeah.
On the calendar, it says four, one. I'm assuming it's four, one.
Yes, I don't know if four, seven meaning to change it to four, seven or four, eight, or it, I, I just know on the calendar, it's April first, that we've had it on there.
Yeah. So I think we've had public forums where we talk about goals, we talk about the strategic plan, people give us input into the budget. The actual public hearing, if we're not... If you want more information on the budget at the next meeting on the twenty-fourth, we still need the two weeks prior to publish the invitation. So I'm not being clear. If you are okay with the budget as it is, as the draft, and that's what you want to present at the public hearing, then we have time to have April one, or we do April seven or eight. That gives us a little more time to do the advertising that's required by law.
So right now on the calendar, we had April seventh as the school committee to vote on the final budget. And currently, we have March twentieth as, like Cheryl said, the public forum, where it's kind of just a input, question, answered, informal presentation of the budget and listen to all stakeholder comments, concerns.
What date?
Uh, right now, we have March twentieth on the calendar.
Friday night? So I'm not, and, and maybe, maybe this will help clear up some of the, some of the things. What happens if we have March twentieth on March twentieth, but then we decide we're gonna make some adjustments based on some discussions we have? Is that, is that a big deal, a big issue? Do we have to redo March twentieth? Or do we just move forward at that point? Like, what's the harm in getting the forum out there, listening to the people, listening to, getting our initial budget out there?
Bless you.
I ask this knowing that there's still some structural things that we need to figure out on our side, right? Uh, to make us a final budget too, right? So...
Again, the public forum is, is a, is a platform for suggestions, comments, concerns that we can then take back and discuss as a subcommittee and committee, make changes if needed. I don't see why we wouldn't be able to continue with that on March twentieth or around that timeframe if that date doesn't work. I mean, we came up with this calendar two, three months ago, so...
And if that's the case, and I don't have an issue with March, with that date, I have an issue, though, with the, with the April dates for the final vote. I mean, that, that's what I'm now concerned about. Are we gonna make it in time for that?
Yep.
So could we make it?
Again, this calendar was, was made two, three months ago, and it's kind of a, a floating document. Obviously, we can change this as we go. So, yeah, what I tried to do is back into the timeframe from last year. And last year, it was the first school committee vote of April, first school committee meeting of April that the, the budget was voted on. Doesn't need to be the same this year, but I was trying to keep the same...
No, that, but last year, but last year, we had more of these structural things ironed out before.
Correct.
Okay. And we didn't have the pop, well, we did have the split in, in kind last year. It was different where, where they split the...
Well, yeah, so the, the in-kind amount wasn't really different. We just had some structural changes last minute that we were not as costly as these this year.
So then my last question on this, just to keep the ball rolling in other places, is this, is with regards to getting the budgets out, and this is where I always go back and forth, because when we send a document and it's not named properly, or there's too many documents out because we've changed the versions, then people inevitably will always go to the wrong document and then claim, I don't know, I don't understand, and this isn't the same. But at the same time, we need to make sure that we're supplying information timely to FinCom and the Select Board so that we don't slow down their process and slow down our process later, right? So how do we approach that?
Can we just put a date on the bottom in the calendar?
Sure. But I guess back to your question, what, so how do we control...
In the last couple of year, well, not somewhat, some, I didn't go to any last year, and I don't know if it's because they were on dates that I couldn't make. But a couple of years ago, we had meetings with all three boards. And we kind of discussed the budget. I don't know if we did it last year, I don't know if we were going to do it this year.
We did do it last year.
Just gonna pass the information.
And I was under the impression that when we were at the Select Board meeting last week or two weeks ago, that was going to be, finance was gonna be at the table with us and we were gonna have that discussion. I didn't necessarily know that was gonna be us presenting the budget to Select Board because finance had their own agenda that they were on the meeting with us. So that was a little...
So that didn't work out then, so I guess now my question is...
Right, do we have one?
Yeah. What are, what's, what's, what's our next...
They were supposed to be?
So...
They were in the audience.
They were two in the audience.
Right. So the intention, I guess, an intention, the intention was to have a meeting like we did last year, was in the library here, every, there was representation from each committee, and it was kind of just an open discussion. We went through line items, questions, answers, suggestions, all that. I was under the impression that's what we were gonna do last week at the Select Board. That wasn't the case, so...
Yeah, I think the question is, since we did not do that,
Yeah, yep.
do we not need something before we vote? And I don't think it's on our calendar right now. So I think, that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that...
So just reach out to finance, maybe, for instance, to have a separate meeting with them so that we, you know...
I just want to make sure that there's no reason for anybody feeling like their toes got stepped on.
So the, the, the budget has, the finance committee has the budget. They have everything that we all have. They've had it for a few weeks at this point. I've not had any questions for them.
And I'm sure they'll, they'll come in time when they really start to focus on this, because I know they probably have a lot lined up with the town that they're, they're sorting through. I just, I just want to make sure that that piece is moving.
Yeah.
And I, I want to make sure that we do open ourselves to at least having these discussions, not whether they say, we can't, we don't have time, or, or we can't get the committee, we can't get enough representation there, so we'll just go this route. So at least we made the overture, and at least we made the try, right?
Yep.
But I, I think it's important that we do discuss this amongst the three boards before we get the town meeting and before we vote, so that everybody at least understands. Whether they agree or disagree, at least we've had an opportunity to, to get the information out there and get responses on it. Okay.
Yeah, again, I was under the impression that was gonna happen last week.
Me too. I think a few of us were.
Yep.
And I was kind of surprised when it was just the three of us standing at the table.
Would you like me to reach out to finance? You want to try to get everybody back at the table, or just finance at the table with us?
What, what do, what do we think is the best way? I'm, I'm not one hundred percent sure. I, I...
I mean, just based on last year, we had, it was school committee, finance committee, and Select Board, representation from each of those committees.
Well, dude, I would do the same thing. So do, do you, I mean, I could send a note off to Jay and John also, saying that this is what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
And I can send that tonight and see what they might be open to.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I, I can get back to you as soon as they respond back.
That, that's fine.
Okay. And then at that point, maybe I can ask you to kind of set something up across...
Yeah.
Okay. That answers that question.
So what doesn't answer is the date, so are we gonna kind of wait on that to...
I think we do.
To change these dates?
I don't think we're in a position to publish a date for a public hearing and our vote until we iron out some of these other pieces that we never fixed.
April seventh, a regular meeting, April seventh?
April seventh, yes, the, is a regular school committee meeting.
Can you, can it be voted on that night and do a public hearing the next night? Is that too close?
So I like, my experience is to have the public hearing beforehand so that the vote is the final say in, in the budget.
But we have had our, our committee vote minutes after the public hearing ended.
Correct.
We've taken that route once or twice, too.
I believe last year, we did that.
Cause we do need to get the town the article, because that needs, you know, there needs...
So there are many ti, many limitations.
Right.
We have to post our final budget so many days before the town meeting. We have to have fifteen days before the public hearing because we have to post it in newspapers and all that stuff.
Yep.
Last year, the advantage was, and this year, hopefully, that's how it's gonna happen as well, that we didn't, we're not really going to the town for additional funds on the town meeting floor. So it was easy for us to say, this is our budget and we're going with it. Provided that's the case, I think we can vote almost immediately after the public hearing.
Yep.
Um, but one purpose of the public hearing is really to get the, to get, you know, the school community, community and the, you know, the town's input as to what they think should be included or should be prioritized in different ways potentially.
I thought that was the March twentieth piece.
Yeah, so they're, the, the, so, again, there's, there's the forum, which is more of an informal, where there's some input, and then there's the hearing where we're pretty much presenting to the public, this is what we're going for with. Right, I just want to make sure Mike talks about terms and, I want to make sure we're using them accurately.
Uh, suggest, let me... I think the eighth is a Tuesday, correct?
Seventh.
Seven. Okay, so let's just do the seventh our public hearing and the final vote. My suggestion, I don't know.
I don't mind that. I'm just worried that we're not going to make the deadline, but that's, that's my rule.
I think we would.
The town's deadline?
The, the eighth. I mean, I think, to be honest with you, I, I see some, I see some hard discussions over the next couple of meetings, but that's just my opinion.
What is our deadline for, to submit to the town?
I can follow up, but there's really only, I mean, and just to be clear, there's two articles that we have to submit to the town. It's the transportation amount and it's our budget
Budget.
amount. I know there's some talk out there about trying to get our budget into separate, but that's, Mass Law says, the school department presents one big number to the town and they approve it, and it's allocated to the school district. So, all we need to provide to the town is the transportation article and our budget article. I can follow up with Chris to see what the drop dead date would be, um, and then I can let everyone know.
Is that in June again, with the two town meetings again?
May.
May, so it was May last year.
It's, the first is in May.
And then they had a second, um, they had two...
They tabled a lot of stuff in their first May meeting.
Financials are always in June.
I, I think the way they look at it, I may be completely off. Even though what you're saying is absolutely, uh, how it is, the town meeting actually scheduled for May, and then it gets, uh, May eighteen. The budget part gets postponed to the June meeting.
Yeah, so the May, so the May meeting usually wraps up this current fiscal year and then they push next current fiscal year into the June, they postpone to June. Okay.
So, I'll follow up with Chris to see when we need to have the two articles to then, so we can publish that.
But, you know, I would ask about what June is saying.
The actual, the actual date that it would be, yep.
Doesn't mean that we don't have to. Not that we should really wait much longer than...
I don't think that information is still needed ahead of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they published that booklet and, you know, I don't know. Yeah, yep, yep. So, I'll get him the two...
And I don't have, I don't have an issue with stating the May seventh date right now. I just have concerns that we'll make the May seventh, or the April seventh, I'm sorry. That's, that's all. I'm just trying to make sure that people understand that.
Well, here's the challenge. If we wait until our next meeting, we can't post for, uh, April.
Yeah, right. Because we need the, the two weeks.
Right.
So, that's why I was suggesting that...
And I'm, and I'm fine with that, but it's just going to mean that we have to stay on, on, on target.
I, I, I am confident that our chair will keep us on target.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, again, the March twentieth, the public forum, we are sticking with that date.
Looks like we're sticking with March twentieth.
Not going to be there. Okay.
But that's a Friday night. Am I correct? Am I looking at the wrong thing here?
It is Friday.
I don't think we're even going to set a Friday night for that, would we?
Um, you guys are the subcommittee. I'm not sure what we agree on.
We have a wrong calendar.
Yeah, we can, um, I think what I was trying to do, we were trying to get that public forum right before we had the March twenty-fourth subcommittee meeting. So, we could talk about whatever feedback we got there.
Yeah.
Thursday night might be better than the nineteenth.
Yeah, I was going to say Thursday. I can definitely...
March nineteenth?
Yeah.
So, March nineteenth. And then, we're going to stick with April seventh is the date.
Yeah, we'll know after March twenty-fourth. We can do that. You'll have more information about the dates, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll email Chris tonight.
I got you.
Okay, but then, April seventh?
April seventh is the hearing and then vote on the budget after the hearing.
Okay.
We need that date because we need to be able to post in time to have it.
Okay.
I will get what date we need the articles to Chris. And then, on the nineteenth, are we going to have it here? Do we want to talk about that now or we can iron those details out after?
Last year, we had it, last year, we had it here in the library.
Correct. Yep.
It's comfortable.
Yeah.
Because, I mean...
Yeah, that's, I just...
Yeah, people showed up and not a lot of people, so...
And that two advertisers, is it just a forum on the budget?
That's just a forum. That's, so we'll present the budget, but it's, it's, that's where we can interact. Yep, we can, we can interact.
And then, I'm going to reach out to Jay and John and just get their thoughts on if they want to actually meet the three committees before we go. And I'll, I'll, I'll explain to them what our dates are right now so that they can make a determination as to how they think it's best to proceed from their perspective. But at least we've, we've made the overture and, uh, they'll have the information anyways, and I'm sure there'll be some, some back and forth.
Form, right? Legally?
Uh...
Anything else you want to talk about this? Is that pretty good?
Killed that one.
Emergency operations plan, pandemic response.
Yes. Um, so I'm going to ask, uh...
Is this, is this, uh, is Nancy coming up?
Yes, so, um...
If I knew she was waiting all night to do that, I'd probably go...
Well, I actually asked her if she wanted to take, um, the agenda out of order and she said, "No, she's, she's fine," so...
I, uh, I did not know.
Like me, she's happy to, she's happy to stay at work when there's teenagers in the house, so... So, today, we sent out our first COVID nineteen, um, uh, letter to parents, uh, and staff. I think that what you can anticipate is a regular update. Um, the situation is very fluid, as you know. Governor Baker did just declare a state of emergency, uh, requesting no out-of-state travel, uh, working from home if possible. So, um, we began this work, um, probably about two weeks ago, reviewing, um, our, uh, process and procedure, um, much aligned to work that we do with influenza. So, we made sure that staff and students, uh, reminded them of good, healthy behavior. Um, and as, uh, COVID nineteen has changed and the responses at the state level through the Department of Health and our own Board of Health have changed, then we've, we've changed what we're doing. But we are now moving into, uh, an area where I think we will have to be much more clear about our responses, um, to changes, um, in the environment. So, like I said, this started about two weeks ago with Nancy's leadership, um, in the schools. Last Thursday, we convened the safety team, um, and we do that every month. And that team includes the police chief, the fire chief, EMS, the leadership team. And we talk about issues relative to state, safety, um, in our schools and collaboration amongst the departments. For Thursday's meeting, we also invited our school physician, Dr. Tom, and the Board of Health physician, Dr. Abelson. They all joined us. And what we recognized, um, prior to the meeting is that our emergency operations plan did not include a pandemic response. There's a tremendous amount of work that happened, uh, to create the emergency operations plan, but it did not specifically include a pandemic disease response. What it did have was a response for if, for example, we have, um, a non-vaccinated student come down with measles, what would our response be in that situation? But that's a very specific case and much different than what we're seeing, uh, with, uh, COVID nineteen. So, that group met. We had a draft plan available, uh, for them to review. We had a lot of great conversation. But we have for you tonight, uh, the draft of the plan because it will have to be voted by school committee, um, as part of the emergency operations plan. I'd like to give a shout out to the North Hampton Public Schools. There was a lot of work that they did, uh, for a pandemic disease response back when H1N1, um, was, um, a threat, uh, in the area. So, um, we've worked with this plan. We've gotten feedback from, as I said, our school physician, um, and Dr. Abelson. Nancy's going to go through the main pieces of this, and what you can expect from the school department as we move through, uh, this time with more cases, more presumptive cases, um, and also more, uh, positive cases as a result of testing, um, and as families are, um, moving out into April vacation and potentially traveling, uh, what our responses will be.
So, the biggest component that, um, I want to stress, especially what Cheryl said, is the situation is changing daily, sometimes hourly, depending on the guidance we're getting from the Department of Public Health and what they're getting from the CDC. So, although this address is pandemic disease, it doesn't necessarily specify COVID nineteen, the coronavirus, because we need that flexibility in order to properly respond. So, I just want you to keep that in mind while we're going through this. Okay, so just a brief description of what a pandemic is. Normally, it's a new disease that comes out. Um, it travels across countries and across the world. It tends to be highly contagious among humans. And it, it moves quick, it moves rapid, um, in how it spreads. Um, we've seen this historically with the flu of nineteen eighteen with SARS and MERS. Um, although they had different levels of mor- morbidity of how they impaired people or in death rates, they still caused a lot of, um, lot of, um, issues. So, because of this rapid disease moving and the fact that it's new, it can overwhelm countries in terms of how they manage and treat the disease, especially that it's new. There's right now no vaccination for the coronavirus. So, that can make it really challenging in how much stress it puts on, um, the infrastructure of the country.
Keep grabbing that mouse and that's now hooked up to this.
So, our disease response plan follows NIMS, which is our, um, the national, um, like, infrastructure that we follow in terms of response for, um, healthcare providers for emergency response. So, we're all talking about the same language. So, when we're setting up a plan, we're talking about, um, mitigation. So, what are we doing now that we're, um, currently practicing? We're going to be talking about planning what we're doing to plan to address the issue, um, response, how we're going to be responding to it, which that's the phase we're in now. And then, recovery, how do we get back to our sense of normal? This is easier if it was a PowerPoint. So, our biggest thing is trying to break the chain of infection. So, this, um, can be easily spread from contact, either, um, from touching hands, touching doorknobs, people coughing or sneezing into the air, um, people putting their hands on their face, their eyes, nose, and their mouth, germs entering in through cuts and other things. So, our goal with, um, the chain of infection is to try to break it with this plan. Sorry, I'm trying not to move so fast because this doesn't like to stay put. So, normally, with diseases, our goal is try to create a vaccine to, um, to ta- to stop it and build immunity for the population. But right now, that's not where we're at. We don't have one yet. So, hand washing is really the number one, um, one of the number one ways to stop the spread of infection. Twenty minute, uh, twenty seconds with soap and water, really washing your hands very thoroughly, not touching your face, again, your eyes, nose, and your mouth are gateways of germs getting in, and making sure that we're disinfecting uncommonly touched areas like keyboards, doorknobs, um, tables, other things that, um, people would be touching in large amounts. So, again, this is, um, the four phases of NIMS that we talked about. So, again, the mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. Um, and this plan breaks these down into, um, groups as, um, we're dealing with a pandemic response. And in these, um, these four groups, we have education and awareness so how we're going to make sure that everyone is informed about what's going on and what they can do to help. Infection control, what we're going to do to prevent the, um, spread of the d- disease or report it, um, or reduce it. We're going to also be talking about how we can, um, make sure that we're monitoring what's going on and taking, um, and tracking it. That might be looking at absentee records. The nurses may also be watching who, um, was sent out and if they tested positive or not, kind of tracking them and where they are in their recovery process, um, addressing anybody who has health concerns, if they're immunocompromised, um, pregnant, if they have chronic health conditions that may impact their ability to fight the illness, continuing, uh, continuing it, uh, being able to continue our operations, how we're functioning normally, especially with high levels of stress. And then, um, collaboration and communication, how we're working together with other departments, whether that's EMS, police, um, the Department of, um, Public Health, the Department of Education to really work together. Sorry, this is not moving so easy. Okay. So, in mitigation, we're making sure that we're providing education to everyone. We're reinforcing personal hygiene. We are making sure that we're developing illness procedures and how we're going to respond, um, tracking people who are absent. We normally do that on a normal basis anyways through nursing. We get the daily attendance every day and look over it. We're stocking, um, cleaning supplies and protective personal equipment for, um, the nurses and custodians and anyone else who might be providing direct care and disinfecting. Um, we're promoting, um, personal hygiene. Um, I know at both schools, the principals have been doing announcements, reminding kids of washing their hands, not touching their face, and the staff have also been doing that. We're making sure, again, we're stocking medical supplies. We're identifying those individuals who are at risk. Um, resources for mental health. We've had a couple of students who have been very nervous about what's been going on, either based off of what they're seeing on the television or social media or just conversations around. So, we have been addressing that with our student support suites, um, making sure we have a contingency plan if people are out, especially staff. Um, we're reviewing our policies and how that can impact our ability to keep functioning on a normal basis, identifying community partners, and making sure that we're reviewing plans. So, this is when disease is not reported in the United States. Obviously, we know that it's here, um, and it's starting to become pretty prevalent. As we prepare, we're making sure that we're updating staff and students about what's going on in families, again, reinforcing personal hygiene. We're continuing our surveillance, um, again, stocking supplies. We're making sure that we're disinfecting more often and in different places and continuing to promote that, um, hand hygiene. Again, we're stocking supplies, reviewing high-risk individual lists. The admin team will be meeting to have regular briefings to kind of keep everyone updated on what's going on and making sure we're having contingency plans in place. And we're, again, communicating with the community in reviewing, um, our communications with staff and the families and then out in our, um, town and outwards. This plan, um, for preparedness is when it's in the United States, um, but it's not in Hampton and Hampshire County. As of tonight, this is where we're at. That could quickly change because it's in a lot of the other counties in the state. So, um, just to be aware that we are soon going to be traveling into the next phase. So, if we have, um, a report of the disease in Hampton or Hampshire County and the schools are open, we're going to be making sure that we're updating you of what's going on, our information that we're getting from the Mass Department of Public Health and the CDC. And then, again, we're going to be reinforcing that personal hygiene. Uh, we will be updating and monitoring, um, the illnesses that are going on. The school nurses are starting to, um, you know, pay attention to the kids that are coming in and kind of seeing what's going on. Currently, right now, the research that we're seeing that's coming out of China, it's, um, kids under the age of nineteen tend to be less, um, showing, uh, less symptomatic than the adults. It doesn't mean that they don't have the disease. They're just carrying it and not showing as many symptoms as older adults. Um, again, that can change, but that's the research that's been kind of coming out right now. We're going to be stocking up on cleaning supplies and personal hygiene. Again, really making sure we're disinfecting. We're going to be canceling non-essential public gatherings, um, making sure we're stocking up in supplies, monitoring those high-risk individuals. We're going to be implementing procedures in how to handle, um, students who are sick or staff who are sick, making sure that we're, um, treating them properly and sending them out. This way, we're not, um, increasing the spread if there's any possibility that they may be carrying the disease. Uh, we will, again, be meeting as an admin team to discuss, um, you know, the continuation of our daily operations, making sure that we are doing everything that we can to more, um, maintain staffing, developing our contingency plans, um, evacuation plans if needed, continuing to collaborate with community partners. We would be working with the Board of Health, the Department of Public Health, the Department of Ed, and making sure that we are setting, um, our schools up for success and managing this. The other thing, too, that we would be also having a discussion on is, um... The other thing too that we would be also having a discussion on is, um, depending on guidance from the Department of Public Health, if people have to go into voluntary quarantine or consider closing the school. Again, this would be, um, made by the admin team under the guidance of the Department of Public Health and the, uh, Department of Education. When school, if schools do have to be closed in our response, we would be updating families and staff and students of what's going on and what our plans are. We would be, um, monitoring how staff are, um, working and students are working through the closure, whether that's, um, setting up, um, a blizzard bag type of thing, depending on our agreement with the Department of Ed and what the admin team decides. And staff doing that as well, making sure we're cleaning the buildings, again, canceling any gatherings, discussing voluntary quarantine for those individuals that may benefit from that and then when it would be time to consider opening school. And then again, making sure that we're stock, um, stocking ourselves up appropriately for medical supplies and monitoring individuals, especially those that we may have identified, have tested positive to see where they're at in their course of recovery. Um, again, making sure we're collaborating and meeting regularly as administrative team and make sure that we are working together to see when school can come back on. In our recovery phase, when we're getting, trying to get back to our nor- normal sense of normal, we'll be updating families of how things are progressing. Again, continuing our surveillance, tracking kids and staff who are out. Um, again, disinfecting, um, making sure that we're not having those public, um, gatherings unless they're really essential. Again, voluntary quarantine and all of the other things that we have been, um, talking about in the other sections. This grid below is, um, just a more, um, intense look at what each individual piece would be looking at, looking like, depending on who would be responsible. So in terms of when the disease isn't present in the United States and we're under mitigation, these would be the things that we would be talking about, educating families and staff and students about pandemic plans and making sure that we're making information available. I'm not going to completely go over this because we'll be here till probably eleven o'clock at night. But I just want to let you know that we have this broken down for each section under mitigation, preparedness, response and then, um, recovery. So, um, it's pretty lengthy, so I don't want to put you through that. It's been a long night. And then, again, we have a section for, um, the approval of school committee and then, um, under review of myself and the school physician. Again, this plan would be, um, adjusted depending on the needs of what we're seeing, um, at this specific time. Um, underneath here as well, we also have a list of all of the, um, the leaders that would be, um, important in terms of response. So Cheryl, Adam, John Sullivan, myself, our school physician, um, building contacts and then at the very bottom, external out in the community. So that would be the Board of Health, um, local hospitals, fire, EMS and police. Does anyone have any questions?
We need to vote to approve this, right?
Yes.
But typically, we, we do a first read and a second read. Or first read and then a vote on the second time, but I don't know how that all fits into the timeline.
So we, we wave the first one, we can, and then, um, this one becomes our second meeting.
Right?
Mm-hmm. I know, I, again, I know you have not had a lot of time, but we're really, um, the situation is changing on a daily basis and try not to apply pressure, but I do want you, us to have a plan. There are several districts that are kind of in the same position we are when I was reaching out to them. So we're not at, we're all in the kind of the same boat. Um, but I think it's important as a district, we have some plan and again, it can always be adapted.
It was actually, that's uneasy to follow because of the, uh, verbic, so thank you for doing that. And I'll make a motion to approve the, what's the official title of this?
Pandemic Disease Response.
Pandemic Response, uh, Plan.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? All right, all four? All right, all again?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is this going to be on our website?
Yes.
I, I do have some, some other logistical questions. I think you were answering most of them. It's like, um, when the decision to close the school is made, you're saying that's with conjunction with the Board of Health? So it's not just us and the school saying we're going to close the school? There's, there's mandates and discussions happening with other people. Okay.
Yeah, that would be definitely with guidance with them. We, I've already been on the phone with Epidemiology in Boston for DPH earlier last week about a couple of things. So, um, their, uh, their response is going to be different depending on what's going on in the community and what they're seeing. And, um, they're doing it by case-by-case basis, based off their judgment of what the specific situation is. So, um, that's why we're taking our guidance from them and with DESI and the other stakeholders in the community and Board of Health.
And then, and then my other thought is if, if we do have to close the schools for any length of time, how does that get counted as far as the hundred and eighty day calendar?
I'd like to talk about that.
And then, just, just so that I, I have all my things out. The, the self-imposed, um, yeah. We're still responsible. If, if a student has a self-imposed, uh, you know, isolation, we, we still have to figure out some way to, to continue instruction, right?
So, great segue. Uh, so our next steps in preparing for a continuation of operations, so to speak, um, in emergency planning language, um, is, uh, we are sending surveys out, uh, to gauge our readiness to be completely online um, with our learning and our instructional delivery. Um, so we have three surveys going out, I believe, tomorrow. Uh, one to students because they think they probably have more than they do. Uh, one to parents, um, so that they can confirm what the students are saying they have. And then one to teachers. The one to teachers really is about, um, uh, how, how prepared are you, uh, to instruct in the Google Classroom? Uh, which is the platform that we use for blizzard bags. Um, but then the extension of that, which would be how comfortable are you in creating online video content? Um, because if this is more than fourteen days, we stretch into thirty days, Google Classroom is probably not going to be enough. Um, and so what would we need to do to create content that was instruction-based, that was video or a Skype situation or Google Hangout? Um, what are our options? Um, the surveys to parents are, um, do you have internet? Uh, do you have a device other than the phone, um, that your student could access online content? Google Classroom, uh, do you have internet that would allow for streaming? Uh, because that's what we're talking about. Um, and, um, streaming and, um, do you have data restrictions? In other words, is your data plan, if you're using your phone as a hotspot, for example, and you don't have unlimited data, you're going to use up your data very quickly streaming if we're trying to use video, on- online video content. So, uh, um, if there's confusion to parents, I apologize, but that's what we're trying to understand is how prepared, what capacity do we have to fully instruct online using streaming or, um, taped video content?
I'm sorry, I'm so late, so I'm sure you answered this, but is it, if we go into that, is it different than, like, could the first one or two days be a blizzard bag?
So, hold. Great question.
Okay.
Yeah, because I have a follow-up to that because, uh, I'm not done with that discussion.
So I'm going to preface all of what we just said with, remember, alternative learning days, um, the commissioner will no longer let us do. However, when you're looking at potentially closing school for the remainder of the school year, I think maybe we need to revisit our capacity as a commonwealth to provide education to all of our students. I think from my perspective, we would be talking about providing instruction, um, but then, uh, potentially compensatory services for things like OTPT speech, um, services that, you know, are difficult to, to provide over the internet. Um, but I think that we can manage that. I, I think that given what this could become in terms of a multi-month closure, um, I would not want to see children not have some kind of access, uh, to instruction, to a continuous conversation with their teacher. Um, I think we have to figure that out. Um, however, with all that said, the decision may be that we are not going online and that can be a DESI directive. So, um, but I think we need to be prepared and know what our base level is. Um, so, uh, with that, to your point, um, right now, the guidance from DESI as of five forty-one in the email, uh, this afternoon, which changed from yesterday, is, um, if schools are closed prior to March fifteenth, those days need to be made up regardless. So you're looking at mid-June, end of June. So if we were to close from now till March fifteenth, those days would definitely be made up. Originally, that was March thirtieth. I think as this becomes, the prevalence of us closing schools becomes more likely, I think you're starting to see some changes in attitude about what it could mean. Days after March sixteenth through June first, if school is closed for those days, those days must be made up. However, only to the hundred and eighty-five days. So we build in five snow days. It brings us to some midpoint in June. So no matter how many days get canceled between March sixteenth and June first, we'd only have to make up whatever we haven't used in snow days. I think we've used one snow day, so we would have to make up four. Any days after June first that are canceled would not be, uh, made up. But again, I can't imagine being the commissioner and having districts begin to close schools on March sixteenth and not figure out a way to provide some sort of ongoing, um, access to education for the remainder of the school year.
Do you think that latest email that you got stems from, because I was reading Governor Baker's declaration of the state of emergency and they actually made a point to mention that they were already talking with DESI about schools and surrounding, um, states and?
Yes. Yes. Yep. So, um, uh, the commissioner of DESI is working with Governor Baker, um, with the Department of Public Health and our daily, um, being updated. Um, I'm sure you're aware Arlington had its first student case, um, not presumptive, actually tested positive. Three other presumptive cases, so school was closed, major cleaning of the school and now is reopened, um, with students being quarantined. I think there's a lot that goes into this. For example, with April vacation, um, what are we going to do with, um, families who are traveling, um, and then coming back? Um, how are we monitoring for symptoms? Um, uh, one of the things that I forgot to mention is that, um, DESI is releasing the, uh, school districts from the requirement for accountability on attendance, chronic absenteeism, given the situation that we're in. Um, from the employee perspective, we're in the place where we're trying to support families that potentially may have had, uh, an adult, I'm sorry, uh, a young adult college student in Europe, studying abroad, coming home and being quarantined in an employee's household. And what does that look like in terms of how we as a district are supporting that? Um, so there's all of these variables that we've been working on now for probably two weeks, um, but that are constantly, um, changing as, as the landscape changes.
So one more thing to ask on this, uh, it would be, because of this, what is the likelihood of, maybe not next year, but the year after, the commissioner revisiting the decision on no blizzard bags? Because at some point, they gotta wake up, like a lot of organizations are, and say, long-term, to your point, no, we don't want kids not in school, but for some of these little short-term things, a couple of days here, a couple of days there, you know, the blizzard bag theory isn't really a bad one.
Right. I think it's, um, how do we address the needs of students that are receiving services? At the end of the day, um, we need to make sure that student civil rights, um, and rights to education are being met and that we're not planning for not to meet them. Um, and so I certainly understand, um, the commissioner's perspective, um, and the associate commissioner's perspectives, but I do think we should have a work group to come to the table to figure out how that can be supported. You know, when our students are going, um, to Amherst College and now completely have to be in an online environment, whether they have support services or not, they're in this environment where they have to be successful. So, um, I think we can be adaptive and flexible and, and come to the table with some solutions um, that would support students that are receiving, um, uh, educational supports in, in our schools.
Okay. Then I had a couple more for, for.
And just a couple of other things. Um, we're not, uh, for lack of a better word, and it's nine, ten, or it's ten of, it's five of nine, we're not willy-nilly, like, canceling things. So we're following recommendations from the Department of Public Health that are working with CDC. So when they're making statements like, um, canceling school events, you know, we are working under the guidance of, um, as I said, this collaboration. So again, what just came out, um, that we are being encouraged to cancel out-of-state trips. Um, we do have an out-of-state trip canceled, I mean, scheduled, so I do have to reach out to those families in Crystal, um, Dufrane, who has that, um, on the agenda. DESI is working with DPH to make sure that their guidance is more clear and specific for schools. Right now, it's been very broad. They're working together to make more specific recommendations about what does it mean for teachers and staff in schools, uh, for the recommendations. Um, there's a recommendation that, um, districts encourage older community members and those, um, at increased risk of illness to avoid large school gatherings. At this point, today, as of five forty-one, they're not saying cancel large school gatherings. By tomorrow morning, they might be. Um, so that's the difference in twelve, twenty-four hours that, that we're working in.
It's changing by the hour.
Yes, it is, absolutely.
Um, so a point of clarification.
Yes.
You had said March sixteenth to June first cancellations, they have to be made up up to the hundred and eighty-five day? So, can you just clarify with, so like, if we, from March sixteenth to June?
If we don't come to school between March sixteenth and June first, we only have to make up five days.
Okay. So we, there's no, no implications for teacher, um, um, contracts with, at this point?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Right. It's a state of emergency, so.
Yeah, so what exactly does, by doing that, the state of emergency, what does that do for us as a district? Does it allow you more flexibility to be able to get, like, extra hours for cleaning and stuff? I don't, I don't know. Like, they were saying that it was the way to do this was, Governor Baker was doing the right thing by calling this and it was helpful for all the districts, but I wasn't clear why.
So from my perspective, it's helpful in terms of protecting our most vulnerable citizens. So when we start to restrict travel, um, and try really to contain, um, the spread, then what we're asking people like us who are not immune, um, in, their immunity systems are not compromised, um, but we could carry, um, we are protecting our most vulnerable citizens. Those who maybe have diabetes, um, high blood pressure, heart disease, those people who are vulnerable, especially vulnerable to this high morb- morbidity rate disease. So it isn't that, like, we're protecting each other. It's that we're really looking out for people who are at high risk, um, and so that's what this is helping. Um, in terms of school districts, um, yes, it, it allows us some time to do a deep clean. Um, I think it allows us, um, to, um, give people the peace of mind that they're not sending students in, um, to a contagion, um, an environment that is, you know, really ripe with, uh, the virus. Um, so I think it eases some of the panic, so to speak. Um, but in, you know, in terms of anything beyond that, I don't, you know, I don't think, I think it, I think a state of emergency gives the governor flexibility for funding, um, for controlling, um, and for hopefully ending, um, sooner rather than later, um, what we're up against.
He also can access, like, if we're running low, like, as you guys know, there's no masks, there's no hand sanitizer. Um, you know, like, let's say in the clinic. You know, like, let's say in the clinics across the state, the school nurses and healthcare providers can't get the PPE, that personal protective equipment, the mask, the gown, all of that. He can ask the federal government to access the national stockpile to get that in there. Because I know, I've tried ordering stuff, and I've been able to reach out to our suppliers. Some of them were completely out by the time I tried putting an order in. And then the one that is working with us locally, they're only allocating certain amount, try to make sure everyone gets a little bit of everything. So it's, this is the type of situation where we wouldn't, they may need to go to that extent.
Gotcha.
So.
Anyway, we are, where I work, we had ordered stuff and they canceled our order. It was nothing.
So if the schools are closed, is that, I can't imagine that being a one-day thing. I mean, here are these people in isolation for 14 days. What's the, I mean, if you know, what would be a reasonable amount of time the school would be closed?
It really will depend on the guidance from the Department of Public Health and what they're seeing in the community. Again, I can't give you that guidance. I know people have been quarantined for about 14 days when they start showing symptoms, but you could be contagious prior to showing symptoms.
For about five days, right?
Yes. So again, that time can vary depending on the guidance and how things are progressing. They're really still learning about the disease and how it's being transmitted and spread. That's why they're doing investigations, especially the people that, who weren't, like, near anyone who's overseas or in the community. So that's why it's getting a little bit tricky. But again, we are not going to know without their guidance exactly how long they're recommending closing school, depending on the situation.
So what's the trigger to even have, start having a conversation?
I wouldn't expect it.
Of school closure?
Yeah. Is it someone in the community?
I didn't see it as being a short term thing.
No, no.
Okay.
And I think if they're closing it for day two, it's for a deep clean, but again, the situation keeps changing. I don't really have an answer for you at this point, I'm sorry.
Right. So I can give you the example in Arlington. They had a student test positive, sent, closed school, did a deep clean overnight. Students were backed, and the positive student is quarantined. So I think it would be with Nancy and DPH, if you're starting to see multiple, I think then you're looking at a full school closure, like I think what you're seeing in New York with the mile radius around a specific area.
Like New Shell.
Yeah. So schools in that mile, businesses in that mile, there is, it's all shut down within that mile. So I think that's what you'll probably start to see.
And the other thing too is, you know, if families are having individuals that are testing positive, that they not return until they're cleared by their provider and their deep, and the Department of Public Health. Because if kids are being sent to school and they're on fever to produce a medicine and they are potentially carrying it and they test a positive, then being here is not safe. So that's the other message we want to send, is if it gets to that point, they need to stay home and follow the quarantine. And I know that's really hard for working families, I get it. But for the safety of the community and, you know, students and staff, it's really important.
No, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I just...
No, no, no.
And we're trying to work with our families that we know have children who have compromised immune systems. So working with them around providing home hospital tutoring, as long as they're working with a physician and can demonstrate that, you know, a student needs to stay home in this situation, then we're working to provide access to learning for the student, just like we would do if a student broke their leg and had to be, you know, in the hospital.
Is deep clean defined in here? Like, what?
Yeah, there's specific...
I didn't get to read through it, it wasn't in there.
Specific cleaners and...
Okay.
Yeah, the EPA just put out a list of specific cleaners that are thought to kill COVID-19. So those would be the recommended cleaners that we would be having used in the school, and they'd be cleaning extra surfaces, desks, tables, doorknobs, you know, other things that folks might be touching, especially if the student, if the presumed student was in a certain area, making sure that we're really cleaning, including the bathrooms, all of that stuff.
One of the things that we did implement under one of the recommendations was actually Board of Health, Dr. Abelson, cleaning of devices. So David was able to purchase wipes, and we're wiping down Chromebooks on a daily basis, and we would encourage everyone to do the same with their personal devices, phones. That's one of the big messages, is that's a device, that our devices are dirty.
Anything else? I thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank goodness.
So we do that?
Mike, I don't, Mike, I don't need executive session.
Okay, yeah, we had to take that off. I got yelled at. So we had to take that off, I got yelled at.
It came off?
Yeah.
It should have come off.
Oh, okay.
Cheryl, I need somebody to...
Okay.
Do we need, Cheryl said?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess the next item on the agenda was standard reports. And it's yours, the superintendent report, do you have one?
Just mine?
Okay. Or you're just going to...
I don't think so.
Okay.
So this is a difficult update tonight. I need to share some very sad news with you. Yesterday, our Granby community lost a wonderful leader, educator, and advocate for students.
Beth Craven, our curriculum and technology integration coordinator, passed away. There is no way to share my thoughts of what an incredible impact Beth had in our leadership team level and at the schools in her short time with us. I will remember her saying that she'd felt like she'd found her home with us here in Granby. She was excited to share in the collective vision of our work together, eager to work with each staff member and support our professional learning, and recognized what an amazing school district we have. Her work energized our commitment to developing outstanding rigorous curriculum, supportive and empowered professional development, and building strong relationships as the foundation of our collaborative learning. She was eager to begin work on our Project Lead the Way elementary program and digital literacy at Granby Junior Senior High School, two grants that she wrote and was awarded this year. She reinvigorated our technology work group focusing on effective uses of technology to create digital learning environments, a hallmark of her decades of work in education. Above all, she was kind and generous with her time and her spirit. She will be and is already missed.
A note of levity, at some point in the near future, I hope to make it through a school committee meeting.
Can I go three for three? Yes, I can.
I don't know if there's any other standard reports we really need to get through tonight.
I'm not going to be able to make the next CES meeting.
The next, our meeting or the next CES meeting?
CES meeting.
Okay.
That's on the 25th.
Okay.
I already went through that.
Did you have an update?
Yeah, I saw budget, current fiscal year budget for next meeting.
Do I need to do the chart results?
Chart results, yes.
Yes. It's in the folder, but I'll give you our chart.
If you have my chart.
I made notes on it. Yeah, I made notes on it, sorry.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right, seeing as we don't have an executive session tonight, I think we...
Make a motion to adjourn.
I got a second.
A second.
All in favor?